Uh, thank you, Tanya.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Good evening, everybody. If we could come to order and please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Cam, can we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. This is the Jersey City Planning Board Meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on March 31st, 2023. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Thank you, Cam. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Acting Vice Chair Gungadon.
Hmm.
You're here.
Here.
Okay. We got you.
Commissioner Lipsky.
There.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Dr. Desai. Hmm. Um, Commissioner Dr. Desai. All right, we'll come back to Commissioner. Okay, that's it here.
You got you. Thank you, Doctor.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
Okay, and Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, five commissioners are present. We have a court.
All right, thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please? Mike?
I see Cameron, Tanya, Tim, Francisco, and Matt. Do you guys swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you. Wow, we got it. Same number here. Could almost get outside and have a basketball game, guys. All right, uh, Cam, do we have correspondence? I know we have a number of items carrying tonight.
Yes, we do. Okay, so, um. Item 24, case P 21 dash 023, address is 236 to 238 Academy Street, has requested to carry with preservation of notice to April 25th, uh, which is the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting. Um. Item 25, a minor subdivision, address is 529 Liberty Avenue. Case number is P 22 dash 184, has also requested to carry to April 25th, uh, the next regularly scheduled, uh, planning board meeting with preservation of notice. Item 26, uh, case number P 22 dash 168, uh, for preliminary final major site plan with C variances, address is 157 Newark Avenue and 324 Barrow Street, has requested to carry with preservation of notice to April 25th. Um. Item 27, case number P 22 dash 213, that is an administrative amendment for 824 to 826, uh, Pavonia Avenue. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to April 25th. Item 28, oh, I never mind, item 28 is moving forward. Uh, item 30, address is 324 to 326 Central Avenue. Um, it is a case number P 22 dash 085. Um, it's a dispensary and they have requested to carry with preservation of notice to the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting, which is for April 25th, um, with preservation of notice. So just one more time, and I'll, I'll just give the case numbers, I, I mean, the item numbers on the agenda. Only, so that is item 24, item 25, item 26, 27, and 30 have all requested to carry with preservation of notice.
Cam, I, I thought I saw an email today that 28 was carrying.
Um.
That was in your email about, uh, carries.
That was a mistake. My apologies.
Okay. That's right. Apple gave me this nice eraser on the eraser feature here. Raise the. All right, um. Tanya, you did, you did want to move the administrative items up to the top of the agenda. I think we're gonna accommodate that. Uh, so. Let's move item 14 up, is the review and discussion of amendments to the 440 Carbon Culver redevelopment plan to allow interim uses, formal action may be taken.
Thank you, Chairman. So I will be incredibly quick. Uh, the majority of our redevelopment plans allow for interim uses, um, especially in areas like carbon 440, where we have older industrial buildings. And they're not going to turn over to mixed use, primarily residential anytime soon, allowing an interim use, so the building can still be occupied. Is a very standard practice in almost all of our redevelopment plans, and it was never written into this one. Um, that is the sole purpose of this amendment is to allow interim uses into those, pretty much primarily those industrial buildings. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Tanya. Anybody, any questions?
Tanya, I have one question, Commissioner Flores. Um, the the way I read it is a 10 years before they come back to the board for the extension?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do it otherwise. We can do it shorter. I think it might be shorter in other plans. Um.
Depending on the plan itself, that area is 10 years space? Would that, uh, my question would be, would that be like interfere with any development that you see, foresee in that area or? No.
I missed what you said. I'm sorry, Commissioner. I, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, my question was basically, um, that large of a, of a 10 year plan, which is not a lot. It goes quickly, I understand that, but I'm just wondering if it would interfere with any future development that you might foresee in that area, keeping it at something like that, that long. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. Like, there could be a long-term lease and it would be hard for it to flip over. I, I believe in some of the other plans, we might have two or three years. Um, and I just wanted to make something a little bit longer, because usually by the time somebody's up and running, they're already back at the board. So I, you know, I'm willing to whatever year, number of years, um.
I understand, because why would you want to be there for something so short? Or some, at the same time, though, I just was wondering to re foresee anything in that area that it matters to fear with, but we don't see that, that.
Mama.
I, thank you. I'll take it for you.
Yeah, we, we can make it five if the board will feel more comfortable with that.
Uh, can we take it at a case-by-case basis, Tanya?
Absolutely. Board always has that discretion.
Yeah, I think, uh, if it's okay with everybody, I think I'd like that. That wiggle room in there, if we wanna, no showing it up, we can.
Okay, I like that.
All right, uh, anybody else? Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, uh, you can raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Seeing no members from the public wishing to speak, Mr. Chair, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Tanya, obviously, we have your recommendation there, so I'll move forward with a motion.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 23 dash 019, which is the review and discussion of amendments to the 440 Carbon Culver Rede open plan to allow interim uses and send to City Council for approval.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Uh, Tanya, I got you. A motion to approve and recommend approval to council, uh, Acting Vice Chair Gangdon.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, let's call item 31 then on the agenda is case P 23 dash 015. Is the report designating the Fayette Avenue Study Area as an area in need of rehabilitation, formal action may be taken.
Um, that one is Tanya as well, I believe. Uh, Director, are you there?
I am. Can we just carry this till a little bit later? I'm just trying to deal with something here.
You got it.
Need it. Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. Uh, just let us know when you're ready for it. All right, let's, uh, move on to item 10 under Old Business is a one-year extension, uh, case P 23 dash 009 for 163 to 165 Newark Avenue.
Promoting Mr. McCann.
Good evening, Commissioners, um, staff and council. My name is Jim McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City. I'm here tonight on behalf of 165 Newark Avenue Fee LLC in connection with property at block 12704 lot 15 in the Newark Avenue, in the, uh, Newark Avenue Downtown Redevelopment Plan. The property address, as stated on the agenda, is 163 dash 165 Newark Ave. Property is located on the corner of Newark Avenue and Barrow. The relief requested tonight is a one-year extension of a preliminary and final site plan approval. The original approval for this project was granted, um, at the end of 2019. It was extended via the Permit Extension Act during COVID through January, uh, 10th of 2023. Um, I have submitted a detailed letter to the planning board, uh, dated January 11th, 2023. Uh, the primary reason for the extension is this is a somewhat difficult project. It's a small project, but it's complicated. It's, it's a two-phase project. It involves new construction. It involves restoration of an existing facade on, uh, Newark Avenue and Barrow Street. Uh, and it involves trying to protect the, uh, existing tenant that's there. There's a commercial tenant there, and the developer's trying to find a way to keep the tenant and still build the project. It's proved to be a little more difficult than, than the developer originally thought. Um, hence the, uh, request for the one-year extension. Uh, the extension we would, we are requesting would go retroactive from the date of expiration to January 9th of 2024. Having said that, unless the board has questions, um, I, I think I, I can deal with that, with my, uh, relying on my letter also.
Okay, thank you, council. Uh, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No. Yeah.
Okay, uh, let's open it up for public comment then. Anybody from the public, if you'd wish to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Chair, seeing no public, we should close the public session.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Uh, Matt, do you have anything to add?
Staff has no objection, uh, to the board granting this extension.
Okay, thank you. We'll entertain a motion then.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2, case, sorry, case 23 dash 009 as presented to the board this evening for approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay, on a motion to approve, Acting Vice Chair Gangdon.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky. Commissioner Lipsky, are you there, sir?
Second.
Uh, we're up to the vote, Steve.
Aye. Hey, I don't forget me.
Gotcha.
Gotcha. Uh, Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Aaron Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, council, while we have you up to, uh.
Yes.
Do we want to talk about Mallory and Clermont?
We do, and, um, if it pleased the board, uh, my client has agreed to adjourn to the next regu- with preservation of notice to the regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
Okay, and that's both of them. That's, uh, Mallory Ave as well as Clermont?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, yeah, I think it would probably be best if we called those together. Maybe we could just hear the entire testimony in one shot. They're very, uh, obviously related to each other.
Uh, that's how we prepared our presentation, Mr. Chair.
Good to hear. That's good to hear. We're always on the same page there. Um, okay.
Well, almost.
All right, so, uh, let's call item 22 and 23, case P 22 dash 221 and P 22 dash 222. Uh, the 221 is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for 70 Mallory Ave. We're carrying that to a date certain, to be April 25th, with preservation of notice, and we are gonna carry, uh, a site plan amendment for 400 Clermont Ave to a date certain, uh, April 25th with preservation of notice, and council, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night. All right, let's move on to item 11. It's case P 22 dash 110 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 511 Newark Avenue. Uh, we had testimonies taken on this application on the March 14th special meeting.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Tom Lean from Connell Foley. Um, as the chairman stated, uh, this is an application that was carried after testimony was taken. I just want to confirm, um, we carried this to a date uncertain. This is obviously the meaning uh, that has been sunshine for, for this application. I want to make sure jurisdiction is proper before the.
Thank you, council.
I haven't received the affidavit publication proof mailing. It does appear to be in order, so, Chairman, we can mark that. Uh. Not sure exactly what we're up to, Mr. Lean.
I don't think any other, um, exhibits were taken, so I think that this would just be the second one, uh, that we have, so wait, uh, eight to it.
Eight to, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And, um, just for the record, uh, council, I don't know if you want to continue the application as we heard it last time, uh, but if that's the case, uh, all five commissioners that are on tonight were at that hearing and, um, the ball's in your court, whatever you want to do, Tom.
Well, um, what I would like to do is give a, a brief reminder of the application to the board, which is, uh, this was an as-of-right, um, uh, proposed, uh, four-to-unit building, mixed use, uh, with retail at the ground floor. Um, the board heard the application, um, and it, it appears that there was, um, some issues with the fact that we were proposing balconies, uh, which were above the Newark Avenue right of way. Um, the board decided to take a vote, uh, to approve the application, and they decided not to approve the application. Uh, the board then opened up a second vote to deny. Uh, before they did so, I asked if, uh, the board would be amenable to us going back and taking a second look at our puzzle um, and removing those balconies and coming back, uh, to present a building that still is 100% compliant with the zoning, no longer has, uh, balconies. So, uh, in essence, that's where we are this evening. Uh, Jeffrey Lewis is my only witness. I'm going to ask that he present uh, the revised plans, but the project in no other way has changed. Uh, we are still 100% compliant, and, uh, basically, that's why we're back in front of the board this.
Okay, thank you, council. And, uh, if we could correct the record, um, that motion for denial never uh, was completed.
That, that is, that is correct. They, they, it was, um, it was proposed and it was seconded, but the vote never actually occurred.
Okay, great. Thank you, council. So, uh, let's bring Mr. Lewis up.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state by your name, please?
Uh, Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I F.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, good evening. Uh, you were sworn in and qualified at the last hearing on this application. Um, if you could just, uh, let us know that your license is still current tonight?
Yes, my license is current, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Great. Okay, so I am just going to bring up the revised drawings very briefly. This is gonna only take about a minute. Uh, I wanted to start just on the floor plan. Sorry about that. Um, so here we are on the right. This is our upper level floor plan. If you remember, we have this angled front property line, and previously, we had done a sawtooth pattern at the front of the building, and then had built in that space in between the property line and the front of the building with balconies. Uh, we removed those balconies and we brought, uh, that living space out, so we added uh, roughly 20 square feet to each of these apartments on the front of the building. Um. And then looking at the front elevation on the next sheet, again, we kept the exact same look, uh, with the, the smooth circle finish and the brick finish, and we only removed the balconies and replaced what were doors out of the balcony with, with large windows. Uh, so that's the extent of the changes. Everything else has remained, uh, unchanged, and that's actually it. And if Thomas, if there's anything else you'd like me to address?
Uh, that's it. Uh, Mr. Lewis, I would just ask you, um, you've reviewed the zoning chart that was prepared. Uh, there are no, uh, variances requested for this project, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
I have nothing further for, uh, for this witness.
All right, thank you, council. Yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Lewis. Anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Oh, I have questions.
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead, Eddie.
No, I have no questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, council, anything else?
Uh, that is the extent of our presentation. Um, and, uh, we submit the, to, hopefully for the board to vote on this project, does he?
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, uh, we are only taking comment on what was presented to us tonight. Um, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand.
Chairman, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I propose the public session.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Um, okay, Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, planning was, uh, I got the, uh, reviewed the plans, um. This project says of right, uh, planning is, uh, fine with the application as presented this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 22 dash 110 is presented to the board this evening.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Gangdon.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All favor motion passes.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, council. Um, I did just get notice that we are going to carry item 31, uh, this case P 23 dash 015 of that report designating the Fayette Avenue Study Area as an area in need of real rehabilitation. Uh, that is a date certain at this point. So, let's get back on track here. And we are on item 13. It's case P 23 dash 022 is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Uh, the address is 558 Communipaw Avenue.
Yeah, Stephen, who's your architect?
Um, Ephraim, from Integra. Uh, Ephraim, if you're out there, let's, uh, raise your hands.
Okay.
Great, wonderful. Uh, good evening, everyone. Stephen Joseph of, uh, Castano Quickly Trauma for the applicant. Um, this project was originally noticed from March 21st, so if you just confirm, we have notices and, uh, they're in order.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. I haven't received the affidavit of publication proof mailing with respect to the application. I've had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order, and it was carried through this evening, so we can mark that as a one for the record.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, counsel.
All right, so 558 Communipaw Avenue, um, this is a, uh, cap, I believe the term is a, a cap corner, so it's the end of a block surrounded on the three sides by a street. So that's Communipaw Avenue, Harrison Avenue, and Crescent Avenue, and it's in the Jackson Hill redevelopment zone. The applicant's proposing a new five-story building with 20 residential units and ground floor commercial. No parking is proposed as part of this application. In order to accomplish this, the applicant is requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval with a variance for height in feet, so it's a C variance for height in feet. Um, the height proposed is permitted in the zone, but this lot is approximately 126 feet, square feet short of the, the lot size needed, um, for, for that height. Um, this is a JCR A owned par- parcel, so this is a redevelopment project. My client was conditionally designated. My client signed the redeveloper agreement. Um, I have not received the fully executed agreement back, but I did confirm with JCR A's attorney that they, they have all the fees, the checks, the, uh, the redevelopment agreement, and the JCR A has signed the affidavit of ownership, uh, after submission for this application. Um, I, I do have two experts for you this evening. We have Ephraim, our architect, and we have Sam Bellamy, our, our planner. So let's get Ephraim sworn in and we could walk through the plans.
Hi, Ephraim, I'm swearing in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, do you state and spell your name, please?
Uh, my name is Ephraim Gobriel. That's E F R A M. Gobriel is G H O B R I A L.
Thank you. Mr. Gobriel, uh, good evening. Um, I don't recall if we've qualified you in the past, have we?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, if you could, just go over your background and, uh, your licensing in the state.
Uh, yes, so, uh, I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, New York, uh, Pennsylvania, and Florida. Uh, my practice is located in, uh, 1050 Wall Street West, uh, Lynn Hurst, New Jersey, suite 645. Uh, company name is Integra Consultants. And my, my license is currently active, uh, and current.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, even though you don't have an office here in Jersey City, honestly, you are qualified. But you're welcome to move at any moment.
Absolutely.
And, and we do have several projects, uh, coming up with, with Ephraim, so you will, you will be seeing more of him. Um, so Ephraim, if you want to go ahead and share your screen and, uh, and walk the board through the plans.
So, the, the proposed building is a five-story building with, um, retail, um, on the ground floor and, uh, and the lobby and some. Um, on the ground floor and uh and the lobby and some uh amenities and. Uh, four stories above residential, uh twelve uh one bedroom. And uh eight studio apartments uh with a roof deck. Uh. And um, uh, the the uh, the the project is located um along three streets. Uh, that's uh Harrison could get site plan. That is uh Chris and Taverno, Harrison Avenue, and of course Community Park Avenue. Um, this is uh, this is the lottery here. Uh, the proposed uh building, we're we're um implementing. Uh, uh, a solar panel facade system. Uh, that's uh, I believe that this will be the first one in Jersey City. Uh, so these these panels on the building exterior would be producing electricity. Um. And um, uh, this project, um, I I think, you know, it will be will be great for the area. It will activate. Uh, Harrison and and Christian Taverno uh bringing it into a more lively. Uh, atmosphere. Uh, the.
Uh, why don't we uh, why don't we start with the um ground floor plan and and work our way up?
Sure, there there's a a propos- a proposed basement that's just for utilities. The uh, it's partial basement. The first floor has uh about twelve hundred uh square feet of retail space here. Um, and uh common laundry, uh electric room, trash room, right on the exterior. Uh, bike storage, also access from the street uh and the uh the main lot. The second floor is a typical floor all the way up. Uh, with a a mix of one bedrooms and uh studio units. Uh, and then the roof deck uh would be pretty much on on these. Uh, these sides of the building with mechanical in the back, uh typical planter boxes uh and some uh small shrubs on the roof.
Right, so those are not uh, those are not trees on the roof, right? Those are are small, they're.
More of a, yeah, more of shrubs, yeah. And as per zoning, uh, I I think we are only allowed uh non-producing pollens uh plants on the roof.
Great, and and maybe we could just a a little bit more detail on the uh, on the units, if we could just walk through a typical unit.
Absolutely. Uh, so for example, uh, this unit is uh. Almost six hundred square feet with uh living space here. Um, that's the entrance door there, uh nice closet space, storage areas. Um, and the uh, 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 eighty bathroom and uh a bedroom. Uh, pretty good um. Uh, sized windows here. Um.
And while you're on the topic of of windows, uh, we did um. You know, we did have a conversation with several of the the neighbors. You just confirmed that the the non-street facing facade. Uh, does not have any windows. That is something that neighbor, the adjacent neighbor wanted us to confirm.
Yeah, as you see here, this wall will be solid, no windows. It's right on the property line. Um, we are finishing this well in uh smooth uh stucco finish. To allow um. Uh, and a building that may come in the future to pretty much a butt against our.
Great. Um, so why don't we go over to the the elevations?
Uh, so our uh, our finishes on the exterior where um we have a brick on the ground floor for durability. Uh, and aesthetics and then uh going up, we have two different colors of uh the solar. Uh, panel, uh, electric producing siding, uh more of a panel. Um, we have the uh, the darker shades of gray here and uh more of a white. Uh. Uh, finish here that wraps around the corner. As you see here.
And I think we have, uh, I'm sorry.
This is the stucco wall. Uh, that's uh between the uh, the adjacent lot.
Wonderful. Um, and I think we have a rendering as well, right?
Uh, yes, that was on the first page. Uh, this is how. The final building would look like. Uh, this is taken from Chris and and Community Park.
And um. Last question is, if you could just confirm the the HVAC, but we do not have PTACs in the building, correct?
Uh, no, the this won't be PTACs. Uh, this will be a most probably a uh. A heat pump, uh ducted heat pump split system.
And and we have mechanical space on the roof uh for those condensers.
It is on the roof, uh, some mechanical space for the condensers.
Okay. I thi- I think that's our uh direct architectural testimony if the board has um. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, counsel. Um, the only thing I. Do have a question on, uh, it's not on the application. It was left blank. How many bike parking spaces are there in the project?
We have zero uh parking spaces proposed.
No, bicycle spaces. Bicycle bicycle parking space. We have a a, yeah.
Um, I could check our calculation.
I I thought I I thought we were one to one or very close to one to one when we. Uh, reviewed together. There there is a Ephraim, there is a bike room on the in the lobby, correct?
Yes, yes, there is.
And is it, can you represent that we're gonna have uh? At least one bicycle parking space per dwelling unit?
Yes, it it's pretty spacious. It's about eighty-two square feet. Uh, and I think one rack should be enough for all the bikes. And it's right there. Sorry.
Right. Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say we do have direct access to the outside and and we are making a affirmative representation on the record. We will have at least one bicycle space per.
Okay, yes, great. So we're uh at least twenty bikes in there.
Correct.
That's good news. Thank you, guys. Um, that's my only question. Uh, anybody else?
I have a quick one. Just uh, it's really curious. I'm fascinated with the fact that the uh outside panels are your solar. Panels too. Um, so if um. Anything goes wrong with any of those panels interfere with the whole outside system or does like. You like work together? Um, and is there like a, I imagine you have some backup in the building too with electrical? Can I adjust the panels alone?
Oh, no, of course. We 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 do have electric service coming into the building. Uh, those panels are built uh into the actual. Uh, composite panel finish. So behind those uh nice looking panels that you're seeing here, there will be some. Uh, solar wiring, uh, that's that's getting the power from the solar energy, converting it with converters in the. In the back behind. Everything is happening behind those panels. So you don't near this of of these wires on the outside. Uh, this is the final look. This is the, this is how the panels would finally look.
Uh, yeah, it it really is um. It really is incredibly fascinating and and we we tried very, very hard. Um, to have samples of this material in in the Division of Planning's office prior to the hearing, but. The client sourcing uh materials from Canada and just weren't able to get samples in time. Um, we are still going to try to get the sample in case any board members are interested and we will bring uh a a sample to Division of Planning and keep it there for. For a few weeks and let everybody know.
No, just for the record, I'm gonna say thank you for doing stuff like this fascinating. I mean, interesting, it's fascinating, and it's uh, I'm glad it's it's um. Be implemented in Jersey City. It's uh awesome.
Uh, absolutely.
That's that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Eddie. Um, yeah, it is. It's fascinating that this is happening. I I'd love to see that in person. Uh. So I'll keep my eyes open for it.
Yeah, I I will let uh Cameron and and Tanya know once we get it in and we'll deliver it to them.
Great. Uh, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you, counsel.
All right, so we have uh Sam Bellamy, the provided planning testimony on our variance this evening.
Hi, Sam. Uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I heard something there. I could barely.
Very, very low, yeah.
Uh, Matty, any better?
Yeah, much better. Yeah, that's better. All right. You said yes?
Yes, yes, I do.
All right, great. If you could just state and spell your name, please?
Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
Mister Bellamy, good evening. Uh, I can't even count how many times we've qualified you at this point. Uh, your license is current tonight, sir. Good evening, yes, it is. Okay. Great, thank you. You're qualified. Great. Um, so so getting into the deviation request, this property is located within the neighborhood mixed use. Uh, zone one of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. Uh, we are asking for a bulk deviation. Um, for the building height, both in terms of the number of stories and um in terms of feet. Um, this this bulk deviation is within ten percent of the overall height, so this board does have jurisdiction to to grant the the bulk. Uh, variance for uh for height. Um. The zone one has a graduated building height table, so properties uh zero to three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. Are permitted a maximum four stories and forty-five feet of building height. Um, going up to properties four thousand square feet to eight eight thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet are permitted uh five stories, fifty-five feet. Um, so at our property size of three thousand eight hundred seventy-five square feet. Uh, we're permitted that four stories, forty-five feet. We're proposing five stories, forty-nine feet, six inches of height. So we're at requesting a a deviation for both an additional story and four feet, uh six inches of building height. Um, as both uh Mister Joseph and our architect um. Mentioned, this is a unique lot in that it does, it is a cap lot and has three frontages. Um, on Communipaw Avenue, Harrison Avenue and Crescent Avenue. Um, the block itself is also irregular in that it is a long and narrow block. Um, along the uh Communipaw Avenue um corridor here. Um, so this is property is surrounded on on three sides by rights away. Um, to the west of the property is an adj- uh adjacent vacant property, and that's used for um. Uh, car services. Um, the property itself today is um vacant and surrounded by chain link fencing. It's also um a hundred percent paved. Um, so we are proposing to improve this property with um appropriate infill development that will really um promote the streetscape here. Um, providing retail space at the the commercial location um and activating the the streetscape. Um, from a urban design perspective, um, it's generally encouraged to provide uh larger buildings that could anchor a corner property. So I would certainly say that's the case of this this location, um, and that we do have three frontages. Um, and it really is the um a gateway into Jersey City along um Communipaw Avenue. Um, the the project itself is also consistent with the um redevelopment plan. Um, we're directly promoting the purpose of zone one. Um, which is to continue the existing pattern, Main Street. Um, type commercial buildings and ground floor retail uses throughout the corridor. Um, while providing for new construction and increased housing and employment opportunity on larger lot sizes. Um, we're also consistent and will promote several of the objectives of the redevelopment plan. Um, objective one to reestablish the Jackson Hill Quarter as a vibrant neighborhood commercial district. Um, we're doing certainly doing that by developing a currently vacant lot with an appropriate mixed use development. Um, that's in scale with the surrounding area. Um, we're consistent with uh um objective two to provide for. Um, the creation of housing and commercial and retail opportunities in Jersey City along this corridor, which is a central location within the city. Um, we're providing um for increased housing types, um mixed of ones and uh ones and studio units, consistent with objective three. And then objective eight is the construction of new buildings on vacant lots, so we're directly promoting that objective here. Um, so with that, I I do find that this project promotes. The objectives and purposes of the redevelopment plan. I also think that the the benefits of the additional story. And and building height would substantially outweigh any detriments again where. Um, where where a unique lot, where a cap lot that um. Is along a commercial corridor, so providing for the additional four feet. Of height would um be a direct benefit here. We are meeting all the minimum floor ceiling heights. Uh, meeting the minimum uh ground floor, commercial floor ceiling heights, as well as the re- uh nine-foot residential floor ceiling height, so we aren't asking for. Any um deviations rega- regarding the height. Um, we're also proposing a white stucco facade on the top. Story, um generally the the change in materials, pr- um providing a lighter facade material on the upper floor. Um, also from a visual perspective, um mitigates any impacts. And again, due to the being surrounded by rights of ways. Um, shadow impacts would generally um fall onto the streets rather than to uh adjacent um open spaces. Uh, this project also adv- uh advances the purposes of municipal land use law. Again, this is an appropriate use and development of the property with a mixed use um building that will promote the general welfare, consistent with purpose A. The density is consistent with the area and what the redevelopment plan calls for along this commercial corridor. Um, we are within uh point two uh point five miles of the light rail station, so again, this location um promotes walkability. Promotes a commercial corridor, um and this uh density is consistent um. With purpose, uh, that's consistent with purpose E. And then finally, we are promoting a desirable visual environment by developing the currently vacant lot. Um, with the appropriate um new mixed use building at this uh cap lot location. Um, in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare here. Um, we're meeting all other bulk criteria or permitted use. Um, and then we're also meeting the required setbacks um. And and we provide for light air and open space. Um, as I stated, um, we we are promoting the. Objectives of the redevelopment plan, so I don't see any substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance here. Uh, we are consistent with what the master plan envisions um in developing this area as a commercial corridor, um as a gateway into Jersey City. Um, so with that, I think th- this project does meet both the positive and negative criteria. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have. All right. Thank you, Mister Bellamy. I have no questions. Is anybody else?
No.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
That uh, that does conclude our our direct testimony this evening.
All right. Thank you, counsel. I do have one question. Um, maybe you could clear it up for me, uh unless somebody in planning can. Uh, just as I was going over your uh application, um. Under uh the item sixteen, the submission checklist. Uh, I have one box that's not checked. That's uh for the hundred fifty dollar deposit to intake the application. I'm assuming that happens.
We we, yeah, so we did pay. Um, the procedures for for the fees are actually, we submit the application and then we get. The fee to pay afterwards with the application number. Um, so I don't check that box because technically when we submit the application, the fee's not paid.
Okay. Understood. Gotcha. Um, that was my only question, so uh. It's okay with you. I'd uh like to open up public comment. Uh, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, I see. Hand raised already. Uh, you could raise your hand, and if you're calling in and you'd like to comment, you could press star nine to raise your hand. Noted, Margaret Johnson.
And Miss Johnson, if you're there, you can unmute and turn your video on. Hello, how are you?
Hello, everyone. Um.
Hi, I just want to swear you in real quick before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Yes, my name is Margaret Ann Johnson, capital M A R G A R E T. Capital A N N, capital J O H N S O N. My address is four sixteen Liberty Avenue in Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven three oh seven.
Thank you.
Miss Johnson, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Um, I own the property next door to five fifty-eight Communipaw Avenue. I own five sixty Communipaw Avenue. I've owned it since nineteen ninety. Um, I use car dealer. Um, I was concerned about the impact on my business, but I'm excited to see the building go up. Um, I also spoke to Mister Joseph. Uh, I called him and he put to rest that. We were concerned if there was gonna be windows on my side, and he said it would be stucco, so that kind of put it to rest. My biggest concern is if it's gonna encroach on my property being their short. Uh, footage. I know it's for the approval of the footage, but I'm concerned that that's gonna be an issue. Um, my question is, how many feet from his property line and my property line is allowable? Or is it gonna be directly on my line?
All right. Thank you, Miss Johnson. Any other questions? And uh we'll get them all answered for you, whatever you have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other questions? And we'll get them all answered for you, whatever you have.
Thank you so much. That's the only question. I was pretty comfortable with the blueprints which. Were provided to me and I'm excited about the building. I'm a little concerned about the impact because. They have on the vacant lot this tarp that's been an impact on my business since. They put it up, which is probably about a year and a half ago. And I thought that corner properties weren't allowed to have this tarp up, which blocks the vision of traffic. Someone also hit their fence one time. On the corner of Crescent and Communipaw, and I don't know if that's. You know, a visual thing, but I was just more concerned about the impact of a five story going up next to me and. To make sure that it's not on my property. That's my main concern.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Joseph, I'm sure you can handle that.
Sure, yeah, we we do not cross over the property line. The building is on the property line. And there's a few small spaces where there's, I think, an inch or two. Space in between the property line because it's angled. But it it is, the building is intended to be. Up to not over the property line and and regarding any maintenance of the property, just to clarify, the J C R A does own the property. It's a J C R A owns the property. My client. Has not been responsible for maintaining it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Anybody else from the public? If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Chairman, seeing no one else on the public witness speak, I move to close public portion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Tanya, do you have anything you want to add?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm going to get together. I'm going to get it together.
Oh, it's it's all learning curve here.
You will.
So I, on Monday, unfortunately, I was out of the office this week, so I'm catching up with my emails, but I did see the Division of Engineering sent their comments. So I do have a question because Lee Chuan raised a point that there is an overhang. Communipaw, which I did not see on the plans. So can somebody just verify either way whether or not that's true?
Yeah, so there there is an overhang. We did see that comment in the Division of Engineering. Comments. So we're going to work with Division of Engineering. And either remove the overhang altogether or get the franchise ordinance. For for the overhang. I I don't know if Division of Planning would support. The overhang at all. If the answer to that is no right now, then we could confirm right now that we won't have an overhang.
The answer is I do not support, especially along the Communipaw Avenue corridor with.
Then we will remove the awning then for as a condition of approval.
So within that memo, additionally, there were comments on the traffic lights and the curb extensions. I'm sorry, the. The the crosswalks. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it. Because again, Communipaw Avenue being the sidewalks, not even really the straight being as tight as they are. We've had a few issues. With making sure that we're moving and replacing lights or any kind of traffic signs.
Yeah, and there's a a comment about moving a utility pole as well. I I mean, we did only get the report yesterday, so our engineer is has reviewed it, but needs to work with. City engineering and M U A and and see how we're going. To exactly address all these and sometimes. After planning board, but before construction permits, the. Engineer works out other arrangements, whatever it is. Alternate locations for for these sorts of things. So we're we're going to address. Every one of them. Just not exactly sure in what way yet.
Thank you. So Chair Planning does recommend approval. I would like to put the following conditions on the record. So the applicant shall address the review agent's comment in the memo provided on April third, twenty twenty-three. They can submit the revised plans prior to application for building permits to Division of City Planning for review. Number two, which is our standard one, all materials and color selection is shown on final plans, no changes to the facade, site design. Including materials as well as any changes that may be required by construction code. Shall be permitted without consultation with planning staff or approval by planning board. And three, finally, applicant shall provide an affidavit from the architect of record. Representing that the constructed project is consistent with final approved plans. And that, of course, is at the certificate of occupancy phase.
The applicant accepts all conditions.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, three dash zero, two, two. As presented to the board this evening together with staff recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting right, Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Good luck, counsel.
Thank you all. Take care.
All right, let's move on to item fifteen is a case P two, three dash zero, one, four preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for seventy-eight Bishop Street.
Okay, promoted Chuck Harrington.
Me, Cam.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, counsel.
Thank you. Charles, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant, for the record. I I note before I start into the summary that it is a notice case, so. This, I believe this was originally scheduled on the February seventh. Planning board meeting and all the notices were preserved to this meeting. So it has to be reviewed and marked into evidence.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. That is my recollection as well. So Chairman, with respect to seventy-eight Bishop Street J C L L C. The matter was scheduled for the February seventh. Carried to February twenty-first. And then continued to be carried up and through today. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof mailing. All does appear to be in order. And we can mark that as A one for the record.
All right. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. So the application before you tonight is. Existing undersized lot, but it's it's approximately ten thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet. In the industrial zone of the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan District. It is an undersized lot in as much as the the minimum lot area in this area for a light industrial use, which is what is being proposed tonight is one acre. You know, you'll hear from Mr. Height later. Later in his testimony that, you know, this, I think, was initially envisioned as as an industrial park. So they were hoping for. Bigger lot areas throughout this district. That has not occurred, but we are, it is, you know, prime for a industrial use. And in this instance, the light industrial use, which is. Defined in the Jersey City Land Development as as a number of uses that fall fall under an umbrella. So it gives the. The the end user a little flexibility. So as part of the application, we are requesting a few bulk variances with regard to setbacks and. And as you'll see during the presentation and Mr. Height's testimony, that they really are related back to the undersized condition of of the lot. But as otherwise, it's it's pretty straightforward. It's it's one, you know, it's a. You know, kind of, it's a one-story building with some parking provided inside. I it doesn't have a lot of, you know. Frills with it, if you will, because it is it is hoped to be flexible for the for the end user. So with that, with that said, I'm going to get out of the way and hand it over to Jeffrey Lewis is our architect, and then I'm going to follow up with Mr. Height.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And just for the record, Mr. Lewis has been qualified and sworn in tonight. And Mr. Lewis, if you could confirm that you know that you are still under oath.
Yes, sir, I am still under oath.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, great. So this will be another fairly quick project to show everyone. And I'm going to start right here with our site plan. This is the project here on the left with Bishop Street at the bottom. Right now, there actually is no curb here, so it's kind of all a curb cut. We are closing a new concrete curb. With two sixteen-foot curb cuts, one for each of our garage doors into the building. We're also proposing a new sidewalk, new concrete sidewalk, three new street trees. And some lighting on the building to light the sidewalk in the front. On the property itself, our one-story building covers most of the property. With the exception of this small area that just out in the back. In this area, we're proposing a concrete pad for a little patio area and then some lawn space in the back. Looking to the plan for the building, the building is actually designed to be two. Multiple spaces. Each of them are basically exactly the same and they're mirrored of each other. So I'm just going to go over the one at the left and then you can see that they're mirrored. It starts on the left here with an eight hundred square foot office space that's accessed directly from the street. This space has an ADA bathroom, a small kitchenette, and then a door which goes out to the main warehouse space. This space is three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight square feet. Has the garage door in the front, also a second door for direct entry in the front. And then also has a trashy area here to the left that can be easily brought out to the outside. Three parking spaces on the back left of the of the space. And then a door out back to that patio area. And then, as I mentioned, there's a line right, a wall right down the middle of the property, and then everything on this side is mirrored exactly the office, the warehouse. And the patio in the back. This is the roof. It's a simple flat roof. And then these are the elevations. Top here, we have the front elevation. This is the right side, and this is the rear elevation. The main building material is the only building material really is split face block here. We are doing it in three colors. The main color is red brown, which we're using. On the front of the building, and then we're wrapping around the right side a little bit. The second color would be a light gray, which we're using on the side, on the rear. And then we're using as an accent above the main entry doors and above the main garage doors. And then lastly, we're using a dark, a dark gray, which we're using as this band which goes. Around the front of the building, the side, and all the way around the back as well. Besides that, the only we have a few large windows over the doors. And the doors themselves and the garage doors are all a dark gray metal garage doors and doors. And that's that's really it for the elevations. Like Charles said, it is. A industrial building, so there's not a lot to it. And so that's it. And I'll answer any questions or actually stick around and wait for Charles to do his thing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I see that this space is divided in half. That's. A demising wall down the middle in case, you know, there's two separate tenants?
That's right. It could be two separate tenants, or I guess they could open it up if they wanted to, but it's made to be a little flexible. But it would be, it would be built as a firewall between the two buildings. Between the ten tenants.
Understood. All right. That was my only question. Anybody else?
So I have a quick question. Just to.
Sure.
As the trucks should be parked inside. I guess they would have to move out. There's only one. In and out, right? They would have to move out for the cars to get out or.
That's right, there is. That's right. You're right. There is only the one garage door. It is a fairly wide garage door. It's a sixteen-foot wide door. And the and the driveway there is pretty wide, so they should be able to move around. But yeah, this is designed to really be a flexible space that they could use for for anything, including parking.
Okay.
And and I I can note, Commissioner, that. We do have Mr. Klein is is on here as well. He's our traffic engineer. And we did look at the turning radius in and out of the the. The building at the request of the traffic, Jersey City Traffic Department. So that's all in order as well.
Okay, so then another question, I guess, on top of. Chairman Langston's question, if it's spread up into two parts of the building. We only have one handicap space, right? If I'm not mistaken?
That's right. That's right.
Should there be another handicap on the other side, too? Just take the bullet or? Does it require it?
And there is, there is actually, there is the same amount of space on the other side, so it could be another handicap space. I think because it is only one building, the building is they they count all the parking together and you need. One for the first, at least for when you have four spaces, you need one handicap spot. I don't think you need the second one until you get closer to. Twenty parking spaces or so in the in the total lot. But there is enough space so that if someone needs the room, the room is there.
I guess maybe we could put something where if the building was to be provided. Into two different owners, there there'd be a lot of handicap space invited for. The other side of the building then? Because now it's two.
Yeah, that that would be acceptable.
So, go ahead. Yeah.
Jeff, unless you're concerned, you know, it's a, as Jeff said, there there's the same amount of space.
Yeah, it looks that way to me, the same amount of space. Okay, thank you.
Instead of making that a condition. Counsel, what if i- if the space is there, why don't we just make a handicap spot on each side? So I don't see how we can enforce that condition later on.
Yeah, that that's that's acceptable.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Um, Dr. Desai, you have a question?
Yeah. Oh, is there an alert on the garage doors?
Is there an alert on the on the doors, Jeff? The garage doors?
Oh, um. I'm not sure if we had it, but I'm sure they could put that as a condition. I'm sure we'd be happy to do that. We've been doing that pretty commonly on garage doors.
So there will be.
Great. Thank you, doctor. All right, anybody else? All right, thank you again, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Okay, then my next witness is Mr. Height, who will address the requested variances.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine. Thank you. I'll swear in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Still current and in good standing.
Great. Thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. I'll I'll jump right in because this is actually a very straightforward application. We are in the industrial district in Morris Canal. I did, we made a couple sites visits while we were working on this project. I wanted to just share some of those existing photos. I have two photos, one of the subject property. Currently, there's no improvements on it. You see the gated green fence. It almost looks like a yard to the adjacent building, but that that building is is on a separate property. The second photo shows that.
Mr. Height, do we have to mark these?
Probably. I don't believe these were submitted in advance.
Yeah, let's let's mark them as A two.
Two photos, A two, and I I can send them into. Ms. Marion, the review planner.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the subject property. No improvement. It is gated along the fence. And as you can see, there's very minimal improvements along along the streetscape. So that was one area we thought we can make a substantial improvement. The other aspect is the the proposed structure. This is the adjacent building. There's, it's a relatively large structure. It's a one-story with with mezzanine in in in. Interior. We're going to be shorter than this structure, but very similar in the fact that we'll complete the the length of building along this stretch. And as you can see. With the the streetscape here, we'll be making the upgrades along our frontage. They have a few trees and whatnot, really just. A certain vegetation along their building, but we'll be making the street trees and upgrades within the street right away. So this just gives you a help of a frame of reference with respect to the existing conditions. The approach to this project, given that we are dealing with an undersized lot where we're approximately ten thousand square feet and what's required is is one acre. We are trying to transition all the outdoor storage use, the the outdoor components of a light industrial use. Interior to the proposed structure. We 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 believe that's a better use of the space to provide. provide for a sufficient area for a light industrial use interior to a proposed structure, than leaving the, the yard areas where you might be able to have outdoor storage and things like that. Uh, that's a common um use of the yards throughout this block. Um, the, this approach, the proposed development will really help mitigate the impacts of outdoor storage, bringing all the used interior to the building, um, and really the design in terms of the positive criteria, um, utilizing the area where the truck and loading operations will occur, as the access drive for the vehicle parking helps us create that efficiency where we're able to maximize the building area and accommodate the off-street parking for the, for the project. So, um, that's the general thinking with the proposed structure, we are also making the um uh sidewalk improvements as well as the street tree, uh, three proposed street trees and uh, and shortening the, the curb cuts along the street as well in the, in the front of the property. Um, we do need uh four bulk variances, um, one is more of a, one, the first is more of a technical variance. Uh, and again, this is um all if required by the board, um, based on prior approvals, but with respect to uh the existing lot size, the minimum is one acre, uh, this is an existing lot, it's not part of a subdivision application. Uh, it has uh existed in its, in its condition um at the onset of the project. Uh, so it's a technical variance, it's a pre-existing non-conforming uh condition if the board requires uh relief for it. Um, all the other bulk requirements, all the other bulk variances uh we're requesting are part and parcel of the uh, the lot size, that non-conforming condition, um, I'll walk the board through them. The uh, they're all, the three of them are related to setbacks where we have a front yards requirement of ten feet, a side yard requirement of ten feet, and a rear yard requirement of thirty. Uh, the proposed structure does have a zero front yard setback, it's relatively consistent with the adjacent structure to the west, so that'll be a little bit consistent. Um, we do have uh essentially a point one six foot, so a few inches on one of the side yards. Um, that's just to fully occupy the width of the property. Uh, and then we do have a jog in the rear yard, so we're coming to the uh, the shorter dimension of zero feet, but as Mr. Lewis testified, there is a portion of the rear yard that extends further, where we'll be able to have a little bit of outdoor patio space um, and, and the yard, the, the green lawn area as well in the rear of the property. Um, those are the, the bulk requirements as it regulates the uh, the building, um, we do comply with the maximum permitted building height, which is five stories in the industrial district, we're only proposing one, again, that's consistent with what exists adjacent to us. Um, the other aspect with respect to parking, um, we are proposing a light industrial use, the requirement for parking is one space per seven hundred and fifty square feet. Um, for this size structure, uh, that's requirement of ten spaces. Um, we are also, in the building, you saw the offices, they're a component of the industrial, light industrial use. Uh, so again, out of abundance of con, uh, uh being conservative, we are, we are including the required parking as if it was a principal use, uh, where one space per one thousand square feet is required. Uh, so that's an additional two spaces, uh, but these offices are going to be uh integrated into the overall light industrial use, so they, they are permitted as an accessory use. Um, but in terms of parking, we're, we're identifying a total of twelve spaces required. Uh, what we are proposing is, as you saw on the plans, three spaces on each side. Um, this is obviously a custom design, uh, where we're integrating the parking on the interior of the building, as I mentioned, the efficiency with the drive access uh shared between the loading as well as the parking, uh, is, is a little bit of a creative uh technique to create some efficiency with the proposed building and not have a separate curb cut and a separate parking area exterior of the building. So again, we are uh proposing six spaces, uh, any future business or, or use will have to uh be able to uh function within uh the six spaces. Reducing the curb cuts does allow for more on-street parking, um, there is on-street parking in the area, but uh the, the, the future use, given the size of the proposed structure, likely won't require uh that, that amount of, of off-street parking. That's part of the thinking with the, the design and the requested relief. Um, we do meet uh the other bulk requirements, as I said, um, we are permitted use in the industrial district. Uh, this property is currently vacant and undersized, and it does, uh, in my opinion, uh, advance the, the purpose of the land use law to um, provide for uh appropriate uh opportunities for a variety of uses throughout the state, um, that's purpose A. Uh, we are also advancing um purpose I to improve the desirable visual environment by creating a uh building structure uh along the streetscape, improving the, the street with sidewalks and street trees, um, so that improves the overall general welfare as people are able to walk along the, the, the frontage of the building. Um, with respect to the negative criteria, uh, we did um try and accommodate the, the circulation movement needed, um, the street is wide enough, so we did review that, so we don't believe there's any impacts from the vehicles pulling, the, the trucks pulling in and out of the site. Um, with respect to uh the size of the building, again, this is an industrial area. The building just to the west is uh of go, of a greater scale in terms of height, so we are consistent with the overall uh intensity of, of buildings on the subject on, on the block that the property is on. Um, so we'll be able to fit in and be consistent uh with, with the existing structures. Um, with respect to the redevelopment plan, but for the variances needed, um, we're improving the property. Um, we are also securing the property with a perimeter, perimeter fence that's permitted um within, within the plan, and um there are material requirements of the redevelopment plan, so we're meeting those material requirements with the uh, with the brick and, and uh the light gray brick and the dark gray brick, so I think that was a taken into account with the design, um, as part of the redevelopment plan requirements. That's all I have in terms of the technical aspects and, and the variances needed. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions um that the board might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Height, um, I have no questions, anybody else?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height, we appreciate it.
A pleasure.
Okay, anything else?
No, that, that completes our presentation, just as noted earlier, I have Mr. uh Klein here available if there are any uh questions for him, but um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, counsel, and uh let's keep Mr. Klein uh on the side for now, uh, but, you know, obviously we can call him if we need to. But uh, at this time, let's open it up for public comment, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands, and if you're pulling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Chairman Dean Owen, uh, from the public wishing speak, I move opposed, public motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, public is closed. Uh, Tanya, you're killing it tonight, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah.
Um, I have no additional comments, um, I did write a staff memo for this, uh, uh, I can read the conditions into the record, um, but they are there and they're pretty standard, um, the only thing that different, the only thing that's a little different, of course, is that I asked for the engineering comments to be addressed.
And all of those uh conditions would be acceptable.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, three dash zero one four as presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation as well.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and um, just for the record, I do want to make sure that we have the condition of the added handicap spot, uh, not adding another parking spot, but out of the six that are currently there, and uh to add a door alert system.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Okay, Cam, could we have a roll call, please?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, there was a motion made?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm seconded.
And second.
Acting, acting vice chair on the den.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipinski.
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
And Chairman Lyson.
Yeah, I think uh I agree with Mr. Height's testimony, uh, I think the deviations are de minimis, uh, given the use, and um, I'm gonna vote I.
Motion carries on in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Mike, do you want to take a break now before we uh move on?
I hate to slow our roll, but I feel like now's the time.
Yeah, I think now's the, the spot, uh, so it's six fifty-two, we'll be back at seven oh, seven oh two, everybody, thank you. All right, could we come to order again, everybody?
That's good timing.
What do you mean?
For the record again, Tom Lean from Connell Foley, the amendment before you tonight is a project that was previously approved by the board. For a six-story fifty-unit building. This app, this project has not actually gone into the ground, so the changes that are before you tonight are largely for construction plan purposes. They do not bring the project out of compliance. It was previously approved without any deviation from the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan. I only have one witness this evening. It's Frank Quatella. He's gonna walk you through the proposed changes, which are largely interior.
Thank you, counsel. Yes, I haven't received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. Chairman, again, this was a matter that was scheduled some time ago and then carried through through to this evening's meeting. We've had the opportunity to review it. It was for the February seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. And as stated, carried through to tonight. So it appears to be in order. We can mark it as A1 for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel. So I swear, Franken. Oh, please. Sorry, Tom, you're first for a second. All right, Frank, I swear, if you raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state, spell your name, please?
My name is Frank Quatella, F R A N K, last name Q U A T E L A.
Thank you. Mr. Quatella, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is. Good evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay, great. So I'll just, I'll run through the changes. As Tom stated, it's very minor. Most of the changes are related to the interior of the building, although we do have some exterior facade changes. The bulk of the building remains six-story fifty units. Majority of the changes relate to interior, as I made, as I stated, but it mostly relates to the elimination of the cellar space and the incorporation of many of those utilities or these service services related to the building. Relocated to the first floor. So if you give me the ability to share my screen, I could do that. I could walk you through the updated plans. I'm not certain if I have the ability. I do. Okay, here we go. Okay, so everybody could see my screen?
We can, yes.
Okay, so this is basically just the outline of the project. No changes here to the zoning information, floor area, footprint of the building or lot coverage. Height of the building remains the same as well. If we go through the first floor plan, as we noted here, the cellar was eliminated. We took all of the services and utilities, moved them up to the first floor, towards the front of the building on Academy. Same number of apartments on the first floor, with the exception of one apartment. From a two-bedroom to a one-bedroom to accommodate some of those utility spaces. We've incorporated incorporated a small recess at the front entrance lobby entrance to the building, sort of to accentuate the entrance a bit more and placed some of that void space with street-level planters. Second through sixth floor remained the same unchanged. So I could just walk you through that really, really quickly. There is a small change at the roof as well. We did not change the footprint of the amenity space at the roof, but we did relocate some of the outdoor recreation space and green roof areas towards the front of the building on the Academy Street side. And some interior partition changes where the gym would be at the roof level recreation space. If we get into the facade, previously, we had a combination of materials, brick, metal panel, wood panel, and large format windows, which we've changed to punch windows. We've eliminated the central air conditioning system and we've replaced it with a VTAC unit. Well, and that gave us the the need to put a louver on the facade of the building and incorporate that design into the window, the punch window scheme here. So as you can see, the building remains red brick, which was part of the original design, a bit more brick here. Some metal panel at the ground floor, some planters at the ground floor, and the incorporation of that recess to accentuate the front entrance of the building. And that's pretty much all the changes that we have on the building thus far.
All right, thank you, Mr. Quatella. And those VTAC units, those are gonna be a black metal panel, just like in that rendering you have right there?
The louvers will match this color of the windows, yes.
Okay, understood. All right, I have no questions. Anybody else?
Just to reinforce, Mr. Quatella, this does not bring the the project out of compliance, and it still has a right, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quatella.
You're welcome.
Counsel, anything else?
That's all I have on this project.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Quatella, if you could stop your screen share. Thank you, sir. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you press star nine to raise your hands.
Chair, seeing nobody from the public wishing to speak, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, with a motion made and seconded, public is closed. Tim, do you have anything you want to add? I'm sorry.
Plan, planning approves of the changes as proposed.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash two zero one is presented to the board this evening for approval together with staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All in favor, motion passes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Let's call item seventeen is case P two-two dash two zero two is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment for thirty-nine High Street.
For the record, again, Tom Lean of Connell Foley. This is very similar to the previous application that I just presented. It is the same developer. The application was also approved without any deviations. It is an eighty-three-unit building within the zone four of the Journal Square twenty sixteen redevelopment plan. It also has, I just want to make sure I'm a hundred percent correct here, eighteen parking spaces. The project is under construction, and I want to be straightforward with the board that some of the changes that we're requesting tonight have actually already made their way onto the building. The biggest one is rear windows, which are not visible from the street. And it was done basically out of the fact that they couldn't actually get the windows that were approved, and they needed to seal the building for security and and for safety reasons. When my client let me know that these changes were made, we immediately applied to the board for an amendment. We did that back in November. They have made no other changes to the building whatsoever since that time. So we're trying to make this right and get in front of the board and get these amendments approved. Again, it does not bring the building out of compliance. They they are changes that were basically necessary from supply chain reasons. So I do have Jeff Lewis this evening. He's gonna run you through the changes. And again, this is really just about trying to do the right thing and make sure that the the changes that were made are on the final plans before we go get a C O.
Chairman, I should note for the record that there was notice sent out on this case as well. That notice was sent out for the hearing on February seventh. Again, it's been carried through to tonight's hearing with preservation of that notice. It does appear to be in order, and we can mark it as A1 for the record.
Okay, thank you. And if we could, Mr. Lewis, just Mr. Lewis has been sworn in and qualified already tonight. Mr. Lewis, if you could just confirm that you know that you're still under oath?
Confirmed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll bring up my screen share and show you what we're talking about here. Okay, so we're starting here on the site plan. There's one small minor change here. We were proposing five street trees originally. And we did have to reduce that number to two street trees. That's not something we wanted to do. However, we do have a P S E N G transformer and some new P S E N G poles, which require clearances. So two trees is all that we were allowed to do here.
And Mr. Lewis, just to be clear, we're we're willing to pay the the payment in lieu for not installing those trees?
Yes, of course. This is now the second floor plan. We have, you know, there's the main building, and then there was a roof deck off of the back. What you can see is originally, we had, it was an open balcony off of the back with some planting right behind it. And we changed that open balcony to just be a closed parapet, just to match the rest of the building, and then removed the planting around the edge, although we did keep all the interior planting for the building. And then this is the roof plan. We did make some changes here to the roof. We updated the mechanical layout so that it shows exactly where everything was put as far as our condensers. We did relocate, starting at the bottom here, we relocated the generator. It was originally on top of this staircase, and we moved it down. This is it right here, so it's actually on the roof now. We also had to add a central boiler. This this is a boiler room located here on the back of the roof area. And this boiler provides all the hot water and all the heat for the entire building. The amenity space that we have on the roof, the the square footage of it stayed the same, the footprint of it stayed exactly the same. There are still two bathrooms up here. We just changed a little on the interior. It was previously divided into two spaces, and we just opened that up to be one space, so a very minor change there as well. The patio area, we reduced the size a little bit. You can see this section here at the top, we cut off to make straight with the staircase. And then a little bit got cut off here at the bottom by the elevator. You can see it's a little shorter. And where we cut off patio space, we actually added green roof tray area. So the green roof trays went from what were two thousand and fifteen square feet up to two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. The patio itself, we changed the flooring of it. It was originally supposed to be a wood flooring, shown on the left here. We are proposing to change that to be a bluestone tile finish, which is shown over here on the right. Also, on the roof, up here, we were proposing a pretty tall pergola, and we are proposing to remove that. And then lastly, on this plan, we had what was a three-foot fence to provide screening between the mechanical equipment and the patio area, and we are keeping that fence, but we're proposing to raise that fence to be eight feet tall. It would still be a little shorter than the stair and the amenity space, as you see on the elevation. And that would be a wood flat fence. Here, we're looking at the building elevations. And what I want to do is I would like to start at the two corners of the building, these lower corners. The one at the bottom left here, this is where our P S E N G transformer is located. And we had to change the doors and get rid of the windows to comply with the P S E N G standards, so this is the door that they require. And then on the right side, we were showing these two very large vents. And once we did all the calculations, we were able to decrease the size of those vents, so we're showing those vents much smaller. And then the last change for these two corners is, we were originally proposing to do a a metal rain screen in front of, as a finish in front of this. We had changed that and instead are going to do the the fiber, the nichihao fiber cement block panels that would actually match what we're using above. So it would be the same finish as the fiber cement panels that we're using for the main sections of the building. Next, I'm gonna move on. There are some just windows that had to change and just very minor changes. So starting at the main building entry, you can see the window just got a little larger. And then looking above that entry, we originally had bays of four windows in this little section. We had to change that to three because we had to put a wall in between two of them, so we just needed the space and we wanted to keep it symmetric. You can also see on the left, a few windows got removed that were shown on the original approval. And actually, with this one, the floor plan was changed, and the floor plan showed these windows removed already, the approved floor plan. And that just never got reflected on the approved or the submitted elevation. So this actually is just bringing the drawing in accordance with what was approved for the between the floor plans and elevations. That's really it regarding most of the window structures. We we mentioned most of what had changed at the top of the building. The one last thing I'd like to mention is, we did have to add two air handling units for the amenity space. These are right on top of the amenity space. There are screens with a forty-eight-inch tall aluminum screen around all four sides of it. And these are set back, so these are, these air handlers aren't actually visible from the street at all. Then moving on to the rear elevation, I previously mentioned on the second floor, we had this open balcony. And then you can see on this elevation, we changed it to just be a solid parapet, just to match the rest of of the wall below. And then, of course, we had Juliet balconies originally, and those were changed into windows, which are the same windows that we have on the front of the building that was to match the existing. And not the existing, to match the proposed windows at the front of the building. And then the last major change here would be the the boiler room that we mentioned previously, and that's shown here on the right of the elevation on the roof. And the finish for this boiler room is a Sierra tan metal panel, and that's the color shown here on the right. And then lastly, these are the side elevations. There are very minor changes. The only one really is on the right side here, you can see there was a double window that got changed to a single window, and then just the rooftop changes that we had previously discussed. That's all of them. It's it's mostly minor changes, and most of them are, I would say, probably upgrades on finishes and what we previously proposing. But I'm happy to answer any questions about them you might have. Thomas, is there anything that I missed that you want me to adjust directly?
There's not. I appreciate your testimony, Mr. Lewis. And again, you know, I apologize to the board that we're here asking for these changes after they've been done. But we did try to get this in front of the board as quickly as possible. These were really changes that were born out of necessity at the time while the building was under construction. And so we would just, we would ask that the board approve these before we go for our final C O here.
All right, thank you, counsel. Mr. Lewis, I do have one question for you. The change on the 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 roof material, the wood slat versus the bluestone, how does that bluestone drain?
It's actually, I have my pedestal, the pedestal system.
Okay, so it drains in between the tiles, I assume?
Yeah, there's a tiny bit of space, and it goes right through them and and just to the regular roofing.
Okay, understood. That's it for me for Mr. Lewis. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Great, thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
That's that's all I have. The changes were entirely architectural, so there's no need for any other testimony.
I have a question for counsel though. You've changes. And then there was no more changes afterwards. How many of these changes? Everything that Mr. Lewis told us was a change. These were already.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Lewis, but it's my understanding that the the changes that were just highlighted were the the only changes that were made. They were installed, and nothing since then has has changed as far as the plans. That is my understanding.
Question, my question is, are there any other changes that need to be done now that we besides the ones that after November one? Is there anything else that's gonna be added to that that needs to be done?
Again, Mr. Lewis, I'll let you answer the question, but my understanding is nothing else needs to change.
That's that's correct. We were very thorough with this. That's why we even showed where the condensers were located to show that they were a little different. We tried to show every little minor change that we could have possibly made. So this is what it is. It's not changing from what we're showing. That's correct, yeah.
But I I asked a question because the way counsel put it, that since November, nothing else has been done, almost left it like something else needs to be done. But I, I asked a question because the way council put it, that since November, nothing else has been done, almost left it like something else needs to be done. Uh, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eddie. Um, counsel, I do have uh one question from you. I don't know, maybe it's uh for our planner, but the uh, the fund of the tree payment is made to, um, is there anywhere in that language that dictates where the tree is planted in the future?
Uh, that is a great question. Um, I think it's up to forestry. Um, but it, but maybe yes, Mr. Crayhill might be better suited to answer that question for me.
Okay, Tim, do you have anything for me?
It would fall to the forester.
Okay, so it's up to their discretion where that tree is planted? All right, so I'm gonna have a conversation with my councilman tomorrow. All right, counsel, if there's nothing else, uh, I'll open it up for public then.
Thank you. Uh, I have nothing else.
All right, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
The chairman seeing no uh members of the public wishing to speak, I move to close the public session.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second is closed. Uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to wrap up with?
Uh, nothing in particular. Uh, planning approves of the changes uh as presented by the applicant tonight. Um, we can move to a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Carolyn, to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash two zero two as presented to the board this evening.
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair, Commissioner Gangar.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Um, just uh, wanted to say to uh counsel and to uh, Mr. Lewis, I uh, we don't like these changes this way. We all know that. Um, you presented in February. Well done. Architect, uh, Lewis, uh, he uh took his time, didn't rush it and made it clear on these changes, uh, which kind of uh helps. You can see the necessity of some of these changes that were needed to be done just to keep the project moving forward. Um, what could have caused that? I do know that sometimes things happen too fast. Uh, but um, but with that, we all know that um, I'll speak for myself. Uh, we don't like changes being done after the fact, right? So I'm gonna talk for myself. But um, just for the record, though, since it was said it well, uh, and the way you did it, um, I vote aye for this. Thank you.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Counsel, let's, let's give somebody else a chance, all right?
Uh, well, chairman, while you have me, I'm actually going to adjourn the other two matters that I have on this evening, which are uh cases twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Uh, for a variety of reasons, uh, twenty-eight, the architectural plans didn't make it on to the uh, onto the portal. I just feel that that would be unfair to the public if they haven't had a chance. Um, and I've already addressed it with Cameron. Number twenty-nine actually has the wrong address listed. Uh, there's been some confusion about the address of this property. I just feel given the length of the agenda, it's probably smart if we just move this to the twenty-fifth.
Okay, uh, so we're gonna carry item twenty-eight is case P two-two dash one-one-five. Uh, address being three eighty-one root four forty to a date certain, April twenty-fifth with preservation of notice. And we're gonna carry item twenty-nine is case P two-two dash one-nine-six is a minor site plan with C variances. Uh, counsel, that's the same address as item twenty-eight?
It, it's actually four oh one root four forty.
Okay, so we're gonna call the address that's on the agenda is three twenty-one root four forty and we are gonna make that correction on the next agenda of four oh one root four forty, and we're gonna carry that to our April twenty-fifth meeting with preservation of notice.
Thank you so much, chairman, and have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, we have something else for you in uh a couple of minutes, don't we?
Uh, if that is six twenty-six summit, that will be presented by uh Mr. Harrington.
Oh, all right. Enjoy your night then. Thank you.
And so just before you leave, the notice for the root four forty has the correct address in it or are you re-noticing for that as well?
It, it, the notice has the correct address.
Okay. So then we carry in the preserve of it, Jim.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right. Thank you. Have a good one. Uh, let's move on to item eighteen is case P two-two dash two zero five is a conditional use for thirty-six Congress Street. Promoted Frank.
Chairman, while they're getting set up, this is a notice case. Again, this is a matter that was carried from prior hearings. It was originally scheduled and noticed for the February seventh meeting. Was carried multiple times up and in through tonight with the preservation of notice. I've had the opportunity to review the notice. It does appear to be in order. So we can mark that as a one for the writers.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
And uh, if we can just uh, LV uh, Eliza Brevard Rodriguez, Corey Jackson, and Oliver Franklin.
So I, I guess I will start in, in the meantime, uh, good evening, chairman commissioners. Uh, my name is Frank Agliardi on behalf of the Other Side Dispensary. Um, and uh, I'm gonna provide just a, a little bit of background for the project tonight. Tonight, uh, the applicant is here seeking a conditional use approval for a classified uh cannabis retailer under ordinance twenty-one dash zero five-three. Uh, the applicant was previously approved uh by the Jersey City Cannabis Control Board to operate as a realty uh, as a retailer. And the property itself is uh located in the R C two residential commercial district uh along uh Congress Street and uh, and on the corner of Palisade and Congress. Uh, this district was actually previously the R two D district and uh was rezoned by the city in July of uh this past year. So the current property is a, a ground floor retail space. It is vacant, uh, underutilized. And the applicant is proposing to renovate the interior and uh update the exterior facade and provide signage within uh, that will meet the new uh, the Jersey City signage standards for the zone. Uh, additionally, this type of retailer is permitted as a conditional use within the R C two district. And the applicant is not seeking any variances in connection with this use, nor has uh planning staff um uh noted any variances. So um, if uh, there's no further questions, I, I would like to uh, to call uh our, our witnesses here.
Great, thank you, counsel.
So uh, first I'll call uh Eliza Brevard Rodriguez and Corey Jackson, who are the applicants on the Other Side Dispensary LLC.
Uh, generally, counsel, we swear them one at a time. I don't know. It's up to the board. If you guys want to just have them both put information on and I could swear them at the same time?
Uh, let's swear them in as they testify. Let's do one at a time if we can.
So uh, I, I'll start with Eliza.
Thanks. Hi, Eliza. I'll swear in if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Eliza Brevard Rodriguez, A L Y Z A B R E V A R D hyphen R O D R I G U E Z.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, and Eliza, if uh, if we just want to jump right into it, you wanna start telling, you know, a little bit about yourself uh and uh, and where the story begins?
Sure. Uh, thank you, board, for having me tonight. My name is Eliza. Say again, sir?
I'm sorry, I said, good evening. That's all.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Eliza Brevard Rodriguez, and I am the founder and majority owner of the Other Side Dispensary. I have been part of the Jersey City community since I was eighteen years old, and I have grown quite a life in this beautiful city. I, I am a wife and a mother professionally at this time. I run a local wellness business with locations in Jersey City and Hoboken. I'm also an adjunct professor at H C C C and a doctoral candidate attending NGCU with a, with a hopeful defense later this year. Formerly, I served as a policy director for a state agency, and I served ten years as a military police officer, ending ten years of service just six months ago. Hope, hoping to uh, hoping to enter the other side of my life, pun very much intended. At this time, the Other Side Dispensary is positioned to be Jersey City's most diverse cannabis operation with ownership being a certified black Latinx LGBTQ female disabled veteran owned business. Why is that important to highlight? Well, history has proven longstanding disparities of black and brown ownership and leadership. So this facility will have tremendous impact, not only on the community and how we intend to give back, but simply on the progression of marginalized groups in this city and in this nation. My business sweat already has a longstanding reputation of positive corporate social responsibility. And my commitment to community is very personal as I come from those various underserved groups that I speak of. However, despite that fact, we are still aligned with a grassroots organization that we have an M O U with so that we can ensure direct impact to Jersey City. As you will see very soon from our renderings, we have a beautiful high-end design branded around the wellness industry. An intentional design aligned with my wellness journey and challenges as a disabled veteran. With limited commercial locations on Congress, empty ones like this are a bit of a sore eye. But we are excited to have the opportunity to transform this space. So with that, I look forward to further beautifying the neighborhood while also breaking the stigma associated with cannabis. And now I'll let my Corey, my, my partner Corey share a bit.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
And so Corey, I'll swear. Are you in? If you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Corey Jackson, that's C O R E Y J A C K S O N.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, good evening. Go ahead, sir.
Evening, everyone. I'm Corey Jackson, um, son of a twenty-two-year military veteran mother and twenty-year state corrections officer as well in my mother. Um, I went, born and raised here in New Jersey, went to school at Rutgers School of Engineering. Uh, worked in multiple C P G uh aspects from pharmaceutical, nutraceutical, food and beverage, uh, paper and cosmetics. And then have worked in the legal cannabis industry for almost five years. Um, working partially in New Jersey, New York, California, Arizona, Illinois, and Florida. Um, and currently working specifically over the New Jersey market um for a current M S O.
So uh, so with that, obviously you have a, a background on uh, on you as the applicant. And uh, if we can just start right into the operations of the business, what uh, what, what you see as, you know, the day-to-day, the hours, you name it, go for it. Eliza, I don't know if you want to talk to it or Corey wants to talk to it?
I'm sorry, Corey. Go ahead. I thought Corey was gonna come in.
Oh, he's, so yeah, for most days, we plan to start at ten A M and run to roughly um ten P M. These uh, this has also been worked out just with the community of us opening after daycares. Um, normally do their normal drop-off done delivery. So we're taking, keeping that in mind. Um, we actually might open later, um, depending on the day of the week as we progress and see the difference in how sales work on different days of the week. Um, predominantly Monday and Tuesday being weaker sales days um in the cannabis industry. Uh, that's our main point. We're only interested in doing a retail dispensary at this time. Um, and as you know, we're already approved by the uh, by the municipality and the state.
And uh, and just typically, how many, how many employees would be on site?
In a normal day, um, you would have roughly five employees. That would include um, security plus four um, employees working the floor as well. So one doing check-in, one security officer, one person in the vault, one person manning a POS system, and one person um manning the floor. That's in a uh, kind of an average day situation. All those numbers would progressively go up on uh, kind of higher output days. So instead of one POS, two POS, instead of one person on the floor, two people on the floor and so forth.
And uh, and you touched on security. If you could uh, just, just uh, go a, a bit more in-depth to uh, describe to the board what the security on a day-to-day basis is gonna be like.
All right. So you're gonna have armed security um at the door. Um, as well as lock, locks um on the front door with a egress as well as uh, what do they call it? Alert monitors at each POS system, another alert monitor at inside the vault, and then another at the front door, um, where we scan codes as well. Multiple three sixty cameras and single lane cameras as well. Our vault will be up to all the New Jersey um standard code. Um, and different from us and many others are, we plan to do a pass-through um, in our vault instead of constantly keeping our vault open or opening and closing it throughout the day.
And uh, and, and with that, uh, I'm just, I want to touch on that, on another um, another comment that came up in uh, in the staff's memo. Uh, they, they want us to, to touch more on to ventilation um, and noise that, that would uh, you know, emanate from, from this retail establishment. So if you want to just touch on it quickly.
We would have all your standard H vac, um, in addition to, we would have carbon filtration um, throughout that system that would be set for the specific uh cubic foot of the retail location. Um, noise wouldn't be anything special. The noise would be no different than any other uh retail establishment.
Okay. And uh, and, and last, if, if we want to touch on uh the delivery schedule that uh would be current and, and in place at the moment.
Delivery as far as finished good?
Yes.
So currently, we don't plan to do any separate delivery. We do not have a license for that. We only have a retail license at this time. So um, all orders will be either pre-set up orders on a computer system where a person has to come in and receive them or just your standard retail practice of someone coming in and buy.
All right. And, and with that, uh, would you be uh more so on the delivery of, of inventory? Uh, what's the, what's the schedule like, uh, given that, you know, i- it's only a front area um entrance?
Yeah, so all deliveries um of actual finished goods um from outside will happen prior to business hours. Um, so that will be prior to business hours on select days of the week, um, pre-planned out with the companies we are buying from.
All right. And uh, and the last thing, uh, I think if we want to touch on uh any community events that, that would be planned or that you would be hosting.
Eliza.
So at this time, we are currently running an ongoing expungement clinic. We actually have a Q R code posted on the outside of our pending facility um, that anyone who is in need can go and scan and, and get uh linked up with our attorney so that they can get free expungement at no cost. Um, we also intend to do other give back um uh, social impact type of events with our partner, which is mysterious ways. We have an M O U with them. They're a local nonprofit grassroots. Um, they really do all of their operations in Jersey City. As I alluded to prior to, you know, my right, my other business sweat does a lot of social impact. We have an Easter event coming up this Saturday. We, we do a multitude of things like that. But for cannabis, we want to make sure that we're ensuring that those that were harmed most from the war on drugs are being directly impacted. Um, and, and working with mysterious ways, they are really in the ground in the areas of Jersey City that are really underserved, such as the Greenville area and the South Side. So we have uh, again, a tremendous amount of events planned, and we just look forward to everything that we could offer the community.
And, and to further that point, we, we, we have uh submitted with our applications, our community impact um plan and, and the various uh submissions that were required for cannabis retailers. So with that, I, I would open it up if the, the board has any questions of uh, of the applicants.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, you mentioned the hours were ten to ten. Uh, Mr. Jackson, uh, is that seven days a week, five days a week, six days a week?
Uh, currently, that would be seven days a week. Uh, like I said, we would only decrease those hours in the event that the sales just didn't make sense to uh, to do that. But you know, our main point is to cater to the community. So if, if the sales make sense, we will keep it open. But you know, our main point is to cater to the community. So if if the sales make sense, we will keep it open um seven days a week, yes.
Okay, um, one condition, we generally put on a retail business um that's open, you know, past dark, uh, any lighting that's on the facade, interior lighting, uh, that that lighting would be shut off and only uh uh only operable during business hours.
Of course, understood.
Great, and um, the only other question I have, it's um it's an interesting concept where you were talking about the vault uh having a pass-through. Um, this board's concern would be um from an architectural standpoint, um, how would, you know, obviously that door is locked from the outside going in. But you know, is there a mean means of egress for that employee that's in that vault? In case of an emergency?
Yeah, sorry. The door on the put on the vault would have the same pushbar egress that you would have on any standard uh locking door.
Okay, great.
Chairman, Chairman, I'm sorry. I I just want to be able to jump into the security side. I feel like we didn't go enough in depth and and I'll just give a a brief overview, I guess, as my um my uh expertise and my credentials as a security specialist. So I served ten years in the Navy Reserve as a military police officer, completing four tours of duty, two being combat. I'm a former civilian police officer with uh shifted to the security operations and management side where I held roles as an explosive inspector, a field operations supervisor, and at my last job was a director of policy for security, safety, and law enforcement. So with that said, this facility is probably going to be one of the most secure in Jersey City. As we were designing this, we made sure to approach it with really a defense-in-depth type of design where there are multiple layers of security throughout the whole facility. So the initial one will be the exterior glass, which has a grass, a glass break detention uh detect detection. We have various different IDS systems, right, which is uh intrusion detection systems, that first one being the glass. But however, even if that glass is broken, if you'll see in the drawings, there's another, there's another area, a door that they have to walk through. So there's basically like a holding space. So even if they were to break that glass, they would be into the holding space. Where at that time, if we were closed, they would have to break through another area of egress, which would be two doors. And those two doors, all of our doors are going to have access control. Um, three sixty camera coverage. We also have the mechanical entry and exit, which is the doors that Corey is referring to, which is the ones with the pushbar. Um, we also will have hold-up buttons, which are also known as panic buttons behind the counter. And then at when they come into that holding area, that is where the security guard will be. So that will be another measure of security. Well, they'll then get their ID checked and then scanned, walk through that door. And then at that time, in regards to the design of, you know, layers of security, the vault is all the way to the rear of the facility. Now, once they go into that space, there's a, you know, a secure design around that vault to make sure that there's no uh way to enter it from another store or from a a rear area. But this particular door that we selected, and I'm going to let Corey speak to the operations aspect of it in an actual dispensary and a grow facility, since he's worked in one on a day-to-day, but typically they leave that door open. It's actually a very vulnerable place. Uh, a a lot of people don't, don't really understand the operations of dispensaries and don't know that they keep the door open, and that's because they're running back and forth there all day. So our measure and our really uh mitigation effort was to have a door that had a pass-through so that they can simply be able to open the door and not have to keep the vault open and closed all day. So Corey, do you want to just talk a little bit more about how that works?
Of course. Um, so yeah, a- as Eliza pointed out, like I said, I I've been in legal, the legal cannabis space for four and a half years, coming on five. Um, working across four different MSOs um on a daily. So most retail operations have a a a bigger size vault that they keep all their product in. And then what they do is a uh, they have kind of a quick rack system where they're going to have products staged behind them at the POS counters or underneath the counter, POS system that they can quick pull and build and build orders from. Which means they have live products available right there at the countertop. Additionally, other ones that don't have that space behind them will have their actual vault open. So if you have a runner that's going back and forth, running, building orders in the vault, bringing them out to the separate POS systems. We're not big fans of that, um, and our space doesn't really work for that. So what we are doing is by having our vault close by with a pass-through so that, yes, we can have a runner building orders back and forth, like you would see in any other dispensary. But we will be able to do that without actually opening our vault's door. Um, as I said previous, we have a hold-up button and enunciator inside the vault um as well as at the actual POS system um locations.
So so with that, just just so that uh I I I would like the board to get to get a visual of this as well. Uh, this was a supplemental submission. I can share my screen uh just to show what was uh, what was presented to uh, to the staff. So this is a breakdown of
That's the doors.
And we uh before we
Yeah, and and of course
We do have to mark this as an exhibit.
Uh, agreed. If counsel, if we want to mark it as A two.
Yes, and then you have to submit it.
Yeah, uh, it it was, it was previously submitted to staff.
Okay, how many sheets are we talking about?
Uh, let me see here, two, three, four, five, five sheets.
Okay. Alright, go ahead, sir.
So uh, if if we want to go through and just so, just so the board has a visual of it um exactly what the green dots, what the orange dots are, uh, and kind of the visual of the the various um, security measures that are that are being uh put in place. So Corey, I don't know if you want to touch on it or Eliza um and
Yeah, I mean, I I would, yeah, I was just going through this. So I I I mean, I guess I'll take, I'll take the lead. So the yellow area is the facade, or the yellow dots are the facade. And that's where that will be that glass break detection system. Then that checkpoint area, and this was really to alleviate any queue that may form outside. Um, I I know that that is a big concern of uh just the neighborhoods in general, and of course, our areas councilman. Um, that was a big concern of his. So we created this enclave enclave area where people will will sort of congregate and wait, and I hope, you know, hopefully this is a a smooth retail experience. Um, and then where the checkpoint is, this is a, this is a full-scale wall here. Um, and there'll be one, there'll be a the two doors. So with this full-scale door, essentially, if somebody does break that glass, they're going to be kind of sort of trapped in that room, and they won't really be able to get further unless they were able to break through these two doors. So as they proceed through, and and of course, they would get their ID checked right there at the checkpoint. As they proceed through, you see here at the end is a cashier. This is where we'll have a hold-up button. And this green label is actually that uh pass-through or that the door, the vault door that will have the pass-through. And again, with that idea of defense in depth, it's all the way at the rear. We have a certain type of mesh that's going to be secured around the vault to ensure that there can be um, no entry from any exterior connections of a store from, you know, there there's another building behind us. So there's another store there. Um, and then I didn't speak to this much, but we also have an educational area that's built in. Um, this was, you know, something that we spoke more at the cannabis board, but you know, I'm I'm uh fine to go over it again here. And this is really so that this could be a warm and inviting space so that if someone comes in with someone who's maybe not um familiar with cannabis, or maybe someone is just curious and they want to come in and look at the space. We have an area there that will talk about the process, teach them about the process, have things on display to educate people. There's also going to be a wooden um, a display that is a bookcase, and that bookcase will have books that are either from local authors or books related to social justice and or books related to just cannabis education. So very intentional space. Again, want to make sure that we are uh educating those in the community that are a little bit hesitant, but then also welcoming those that are ready to embrace us.
Yep, and just so, just so you you understand a a bit more of the actual um, you know, rendering of it and what what the interior would look like.
You can, you can skip that one, Frank. That's not the appropriate render.
Alright, so here you have the card readers.
Corey, you want, well, yeah, so
Yeah, so we, we have seven separate uh card readers for our different um entries, all of our outdoor outside entry points um have multiple points. So you have your key fob to get in the door as well as a punch code to get in the door um so that it's a two-point altercation um to get into the building. Um, that's more for open and closing of the building um so that, you know, no mistakes happen. These are um chairman, as you asked, regarding the door strikes, the different types of door strike. This would be our interior door strike. Notice our exterior door strike, apologies, and then Frank, and that's the interior door strike.
We'll stop the share now. And then uh, then yeah, I guess uh, I guess we could um jump it back to uh to any further questions that the the board would have.
Alright, thank you. Um, I would like to get back to that vault. Uh, just looking at these plans. That door swings to the inside of the storage, correct?
Yes.
Um, I think for a fire egress, uh, it would be required that that door had the pushbar on the inside and open to the out.
Okay, we can make that adjustment.
Okay, and um, I I I think we would probably have the same situation behind the cashier's uh spot.
So this door?
To the hallway you're, there's a hallway you're saying?
Yeah.
We can make that adjustment as well.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I'm sure the building department would pick that up, but uh, you know, we like to dot our i's and cross our t's here before it even gets to the building department. Um
Understood.
That's, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
I um, I have a question. Just Commissioner Paul. I s- I've noticed the existing building, existing layout, it was the extra door that goes into the hallway, I guess, for the of units upstairs. Um, that uh, in the uh, in the building, or more floor above. Um, so as you went through the cannabis controls and the other agencies and stuff, there was no mention of having a double door where the people that go in and out are different doors? Or was it just that it has one door which got enough for the outs of the uh that uh, I've seen before where we had people going into one door, but they come out um, and uh, and now we just have one address. Uh, and was stated that that was okay to the other um eight and stuff, where you had the one egress uh in and out, coming in and out from the front of the building.
Frank, are you able to pull that back up?
Yeah, I uh, I'll pull it up here. This is, I I think, I think it's more and if I'm wrong, Commissioner, I think that you're talking more to um the actual architectural plans that were provided. And my guess is going to be on this uh proposed flow uh flow plan.
That's part of it, yes.
Yeah, so you see where you have the the one ingress egress door here, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, I I I don't believe that anything, anything was made mention of of two doors, nor was there any need for for two in uh in this.
Was no, no issue about having the same door to go in and out of the facility, just the one door going into the street.
Yes, and I I I don't believe that there was any, any um uh testimony or any
When you went to the other boards, and it never came up that you
No, not not the cannabis control board, no.
Okay, okay.
However, Commissioner, that is something that I that I do think that we would add in because now that I'm looking at it, I was all under the presumption there was two doors there as well. So there will be two doors there.
Yeah, because if you look at the first page of, at same presentation, that uh, the existing drawing of the layout. Uh, I don't know what you have upstairs, uh, but right there, you'll see that there's a door going into that stairwell that leaves you for outside, right? On the left-hand side of that picture, and the other door, I use a, use a block in that off. I understand maybe the upstairs is different from the facility downstairs, that makes sense. But I was just wondering if the cannabis uh control board had any mention of the in and out of the so if they didn't, that uh, I don't know if that's a requirement of the hour. I would think that will be different actions for the flow.
No, and and I I I mean, you make a good point, and and Eliza, I think, I think you touched on it. If um, if this is a concern, you know, we have no problem adjusting the plans to, you know, potentially put uh dual doors uh, you know, one, one here, one here, or uh to avoid uh the flow issue, put an ingress here and a and an egress on the other side.
I mean, you saw, she has a very good qualification in security.
Yes.
As a police officer for so many years. Um, so you, I I'm pretty sure you know better than I do. Um, but I just, I just find from previous applications, I was just wondering how and if you feel it's necessary just to have a smoother operation of just uh, that's why I was picking it up. Uh, thank you.
We'll definitely look into that and take that under advisement.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions? Alright, thank you, everybody. We appreciate it.
Uh, Chairman Leisten, um, I have a question for you would be if they decide to have another door at the front there, in and out. Do uh, do they need to come back to us?
Um.
Well, can we just state if that's a requirement by the state or some to have, and they could do it or?
To, to my knowledge, I don't think it's a requirement either by the state or our ordinance. Um, I I think I I'd be happy to to put a condition of approval on there. Um
If they feel like doing it, they go with the planning staff?
Yeah, that just work with planning staff on it.
And and that's, that that's what I I I would ask as well, that, you know, we cooperate with uh with planning and, you know, come uh, come together to to figure whatever.
I don't, I I I'm just picking it up. I don't want them to have to come back to us and and postpone the whole process and stuff.
Uh, agreed. That's, that's the last thing I want to see is uh, you know, another dispensary gets slowed down here. It's uh
Let's get this moving forward. I agree with you.
And I, I want to see one of these places open finally. Yeah. But anyway, um, yeah, no, that that would be agreeable to us. Uh, just work with planning staff. If you do decide to add another uh means of egress um in the front of the building. Uh, so with that, counsel, is there anything else?
Uh, no, uh, nothing else.
Okay, so if we could, let's open it up for public comment. I do see one hand raised. Uh, anybody from the public, if you want to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Mother is here.
Hello, my name is Mata Figaro.
Hi, Miss Figaro. I'm sorry, let me just swear you in. Uh, and are you able to turn your video on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hello, I see you, and I just wanted to see if you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, one more time, I'm sorry. Could you state your name and spell it?
Mata, M A T H A, last name Figaro, F I G A R O.
And I'm sorry, could you give us your home address too, please?
Four seventy-five Washington Boulevard, Jersey City, New Jersey, zero seven three one zero.
Thank you.
Ms. Figaro, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Awesome. I'm going to make it really quick. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and for uh uh, I, well, I should say Chairman and Commissioners um for, you know, passing on the conditional approval. My name is Mata Figaro. As I stated before, I actually am holding a class-two manufacturing license, so I am a part of the other side's uh supply chain. And I just want to let you know that the important decisions that you make today, not only do they affect Jersey City, but they affect they affect the entire state. And because of your swift decision to get them, you know, conditionally approved and on to the next board, that really allows for us to create an economically stable uh, you know, environment inside of the cannabis industry. Um, as a manufacturer, I can also testify to the fact that we focus on making sure that our products are are made with the utmost of regulatory compliance. They do not smell. We choose packaging that does not, you know, uh attracts children or cause any odor issues or anything of that uh nature. So I'm really So I'm really thankful for your decision to allow them to continue on in the process. And if there's any way that you could just speak to everybody else that comes along in the process and have them, you know, expedite this so that we can get up and running immediately, that would be awesome. And uh, again, just super thankful for, you know, giving her the access to be able to be. One of the first and one of the baddest in the cannabis industry, representing minorities and women and veterans and the LGBTQ community. Having Eliza out here is a really, really important thing and what you guys are doing is really tremendous and I commend you uh, for your efforts in helping her get along. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And believe me, if I could move it along any quicker than it's moving, I would. Uh, oh my God. All right, anybody else from public? Uh, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand. Anybody else?
Seen a more public, I'd like to close the public portion.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed.
So uh, so with that, uh, I'd like to next call Oliver Franklin, who is uh, our.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel. I, I thought that was the end of your.
Oh, no, I mean.
For public.
No, that's that. Uh, I mean, if, if you want to have uh, Mr. Franklin touch on the architectural plans that were already submitted, um. Just briefly, I, I think that we would uh. Uh, if you wouldn't mind that, I think that that would probably, just if anybody else has any questions, it would alleviate some of the uh, the concerns or anything else that um, the community would have.
So Chairman, I don't know if we have additional questions. Perhaps that's the way we proceed since we spent so much time going through the security and the architectural together. Uh, if there's any architectural questions that the board has, I, I would say we open the floor up to, to ask those questions, but. From an architectural standpoint, seems pretty straightforward, given the. Testimony from the other two witnesses with respect to the security in place.
Uh, agreed, Council. Um, yeah, I think we covered all of our questions, um. And obviously, if we did take any more testimony from an architect, uh, we would have to open up public comment again. But um, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I think we're uh, we're good to move on.
Yep, and uh, it's no problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, Francisco, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, yeah, I'll be really brief. I just wanted to clarify at the beginning, this area was previously zoned as R1. Um, but it was changed, I believe about November um, to the current residential commercial district uh, two or RC two zone. Um, there are no other approved class five retailer uh, cannabis locations nearby. Um, and staff is in receipt and has posted all relevant documents to data portal. Uh, with that said, staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in my staff report.
All right, and Council, you're agreeable to those uh, those conditions?
Yep, we would have no problem uh, agreeing with those conditions.
Okay, and also the conditions we discussed tonight, um, the signage not being illuminated after uh, closed business.
Yep.
Uh, the uh, the vault door and the cashier's door uh, being an outward swing uh, for fire egress. Um. Uh, what else did I have? I didn't write.
And uh, and the working with planning staff on uh, potential egress and ingress.
Yes, okay, so uh, we have your consent on record to uh, agree to those conditions?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion then.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash two zero five as presented to the board this evening.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Good luck on the other side. I wrote I.
And Chairman Langston.
Um, I, I have to say, this is one of the. Most in-depth security plans that I've seen so far. It seems completely realized. Um. I, I appreciate the owners uh, testifying on behalf. Of their professionals. Uh, I, I don't think it could have been done any better by their professionals. So uh. Best of luck, guys. This is my neighborhood. Uh, I'm happy to see something opening up on Congress and Palisade rather than Central. Um, we need to spread these things out in the heights, but um, I, I really look forward to this location and uh, happily vote I.
Motion carries all in favor. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
You on the other side.
Have a great night.
We actually will. See you at some time, some point. Uh, all right, let's uh, move on to item nineteen. It's case P two two dash one four eight. Is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment for six twenty-six Summit Avenue. And Commissioner Lipsky, we got to coordinate outfits before. We got to talk about what we're going to wear. We can't do this.
Uh, I'm a chairman in grooming.
It must be a heist thing.
That other side, right?
The other side.
Yeah, also good evening again.
Okay, good evening again. Yes, um, for the record, Charles Harrington of, of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant for the. Um, presentation for agenda item nineteen. Um, the uh, this, this is a notice case, uh, so it asks that they um, be marked into uh, evidence. I. I believe that this was originally scheduled for February seventh and had the notices were preserved through tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Council. You are correct. Uh, Chairman, this was scheduled for the February seventh and we've carried it now for. Multiple hearings preserving that notice through this evening. All does appear to be in order. We're going to mark those as A1 for purposes of the record. And I do note that it is an amendment to a. Site plan.
All right, thank you, Council.
Okay, yeah, so the project amendment before you tonight, it's, it's a project that was approved by this board. Uh, I believe around January uh, twenty-first in twenty twenty. Uh, since that time, um, a lot of work has, has been, has been done. Um, they are actually uh. In construction, um, in that they are working on the cellar uh, and foundation. They're not yet vertical. Um, but uh, they, uh, as, as many large projects do, they, they come back with, with some proposed changes. Uh, the changes that are before you tonight. Um, are will, you know, will, will be shown by the architect of, namely where. We are proposing a twenty-nine story building. Uh, and we're asking for relief as to the permitted number of stories. It's twenty-nine verse twenty-seven. And the permitted height, uh, we're asking for a relief of two feet. Um, the permitted height. Is two hundred and ninety-three feet and we're asking for two hundred and ninety-five. And if I could back up a second with regard to the stories, uh, one of those stories, as you'll see during a presentation, is actually a mezzanine level. Uh, uh, within uh, I believe the ground floor. Uh, the other one is, is a proposed amenity uh, floor for, for the residents. So. Um, you're not increasing uh, the, the potential or, or the number of residential units here. That's all staying the same. Um, there are some, some variances we're asking for that you see on the agenda. Uh, they are actually the variances or deviations that were approved as part of the original approval. Um, in the event they are required, we're asking for relief again. Uh, they. It's only that the building is, is going up vertically. It's not expanding um, outward at all. Um, so we have listed those as a kind of a belt and suspenders type of um, notice. Uh, and then there, we do, we are asking for a deviation with regard to the. Location of the transformer and we'll address that as part of the presentation. Um, so uh, with that said, I have, I, I have um. Two witnesses that I'm proposing uh, to present tonight. The architect is Anthony Vandermark. And our, our planner is Charles Height. And just kind of a background, I know, I know Mr. Vandermark will get into it, but if you recall, this is the. Uh, it's, it's at the edge of, of the northern edge of Summit Avenue as it gets uh, closer to Route one thirty-nine on the upper level. Um, so it does have um, a proposed access uh, to the Bergen Arches if, if that ever does uh, come into play, but it. I, I think it's really, you know, uh, fantastic looking building. Um, and um. And this is just helping move it along uh, that much better. So with that said, um, Anthony, is, is he, is he up here?
Anthony, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state, spell your name, please?
Sure, that is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr. Vandermark V A N D E R M A R K.
Thank you. Mr. Vandermark, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Uh, you were the architect of record on this project previously. And uh, is your license current tonight?
Uh, good evening, Chair. Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Anthony, before you start, is any part of your presentation, do we have to mark it as a, an additional exhibit?
Let's mark the whole presentation as an additional uh, exhibit. Um, what I did was I created. Some presentation slides just for clarity for the board, uh, just to have a better understanding of some of the changes that are made. As opposed to just showing them some black and white slides.
Thank you. So let's mark that, those as A two, two, two presentation slides.
Mr. Vandermark, it's just two slides?
Uh, uh, no, it is not.
I didn't think so.
Let's go with nineteen.
Okay.
Okay. I like to sound the two better, Mr. Harrington.
I tried.
Okay, so A two is the nineteen slides and Mr. Vandermark, you'll submit that to staff after the presentation.
Yes.
Right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Harrington, I'll, I'll, I'll take it away. Um. Uh, I thank the board for being here this evening and, and we are just really excited about this project. Um. The original application was listed as six twenty-two, six twenty-eight Summit Avenue. Uh, the new name for this project is now called the Sing Tower. Um, the original application, uh, again, as Mr. Harrington had previously mentioned. Is approved at twenty-seven stories. However, we are proposing twenty-nine stories. One of them being a mezzanine and one being a ten-foot uh, uh, high amenity space at the fourteenth floor. Um, that adds no residential floor area. Just to uh, let the board know where exactly we are, uh, highlighted in red, we have a fourteen thousand seventy-seven square foot site. As you can see, it's just north of the five corners here um, on Summit Avenue. Um, the green belt, uh, as you can see directly to the north, running on a diagonal right next to Route one thirty-nine. Uh, as we hope uh, in, in the future is the future Bergen Arches. Uh, uh, park that be located approximately eighty feet uh, to a hundred feet below where our site is located. Why are we here this evening? Um, again, a slight height change between uh, twenty-seven stories to twenty-nine stories. With ten feet from two eighty-five to two ninety-five. As Mr. Harrington had previously mentioned, we are uh, two feet. Above the actual permitted, but we are still within ten percent of the overall uh, deviation allowance. For zone three in the uh, Journal Square redevelopment plan. Uh, so again, uh, second floor uh, mezzanine being added, a fourteen floor resident amenity being added. The number of residential units are exactly the same at two hundred and nine and the unit program and unit mix are exactly the same as previously. Proposed uh, to this board in twenty twenty. Uh, again, we are proposing two retail spaces at the first floor. Uh, one being a corner retail at the sidewalk line and then the second being a real estate office, which is into back portion of the first floor. As part of this application, uh, we previously had two stories approved for office. Uh, again, we're bringing those two floors back, but we are using two of those partial floors for commercial amenity. Uh, these commercial amenities are permitted uses uh, uh, within the office bonus for zone three. However, these days, and, and I'm sure the board knows this already, is that. Uh, pure office space uh, isn't no longer really at a premium. However, uh, such daycare facilities and um. Uh, different commercial amenities that are going within this building are. So we have changed uh, some of these floor plans to permitted commercial amenity uses. Building coverage remains exactly the same, ninety-seven point eight and sixty-nine uh, point one eight for building coverage. We have a slight uh, setback change uh, at the front yard to the west. Um, I will show you within the. Uh, the drop-off lane that uh, we have decreased from twenty-two and a half feet to eighteen feet, eight inches. However, it does not uh, change the overall impact of this, excuse me. Of this front yard setback because the uh, the minimum there was eight feet. We didn't have any uh, parking spaces proposed on the original, uh, none on the new proposal in front of you. The original application at fifty-two bike spaces, they were located at the first floor. As part of this proposal, we have sixty-two. Uh, with two on the exterior, however, they are moved to the cellar, all of them being uh, accessed via elevator. The loading bay situation as previously proved is, excuse me. Uh, is a front in and, and a uh, a back out. Or a uh, a back in and front out situation, um, that has no change. The previous application had a storm at detention system in the drop-off loop. We have now moved that detention system to the primary roof. Uh, above the twenty-nine story. So what we've created was a stormwater. Uh, retention pond at the roof line as opposed to in the ground. This will be fully permitted by M U A. Um, and again, we uh, we are already. Uh, through this process, already in design and approvals. The cellar area, uh, as Mr. Harrington had previously stated, is expanding from one thousand one hundred ninety-three square feet. To four thousand five hundred and sixty-eight square feet. This is all below grade, so it doesn't count as a story. Um. The owner needed some additional storage spaces, uh, and in addition that we needed some additional utility spaces. We made some slight modifications to the uh, proposed facade system. Uh, this was part and possible because of the uh, one extra floor that we added. And also some minor uh, modifications of the floor plan shifted the screen around a little bit. Um, as in these typical buildings, you do see um, the P tack louvers. Uh, we've actually come up with what we think is a very creative solution to dealing with the uh, uh, P tack liver situation. And when I get into the elevations, I'll show you that. When I take you to, to the proposed cellar, previously approved cellar is in the top left-hand corner. Again, a expansion in footprint. Um, the bike storage room uh, was moved to the sorrow level, but it, it has increased in capacity. And again, we had to expand uh, different utility rooms and we added some storage for ownership. The major uh, changes to the interior of the building are at the first floor. The original application uh, at the back end of the loading bay had the proposed uh, interior transformer vault. A P S E N G did not allow that transformer vault location, so therefore we had to move it uh, forward. Uh, in plan, and if you can see it, it's moved here. Um, by moving the transformer to the front of the building, which needs to be accessed from the sidewalk line. Different things had to move around, so the residential lobby again is centrally located. However, fire command center moved from. The transformer location to the left location shown here. And then the mailroom tucked behind it, second retail space and then the residential amenity is here to the rear, which is facing east. Um, we have a retail space again at the sidewalk line. We have maintained the access point to the future Bergen Arch. Uh, location, which is here uh, via uh, uh, an overhang or a, a catwalk. As you can see in the drop-off loop, uh, we originally had a more circular design, uh, and we have changed that now, very more streamlined. Uh, uh, two-car drop-off loop here in the front. Um, again, the storm order detention system moved from drop-off uh, uh, lane from here. Uh, to the roof, again, no change in capacity and will be approved uh, via M U A. So the proposed second floor, so this is one of the new levels as, as part of this amended application. There, there, there's lots of height uh, uh, within a first to second floor volume here, right? So there's twenty feet. Um, there's certain areas like the transformer, um, like the fire command center. You don't need a twenty-foot high space in some of these areas. So. The highlighted areas shown in red are a quote-unquote a mezzanine uh, level. Which divides the twenty feet into two ten-foot spaces. So what we did was we expanded the retail. Um, we created an upper lounge. Um, and then we have a conference room above the transformer location, looking down into the main lobby. So as you can see, you, you know, within the uh, existing volume of the space. But we made use for some, you know, some, some better function uh, for the overall building. uh, we made use for some, you know, some, some better function, uh, for the overall building. Highlighted in red here is that location. Now floors three and four were originally all proposed as, uh, commercial, commercial office. About eight thousand square feet in footprint area. Again, it remains exactly the same at eight thousand square feet. Um, both floors are accessed by a commercial elevator system that is accessed off the main lobby and also the sidewalk line. But we've also added, uh, some different areas like a daycare, uh, an art gallery and sports spaces that is all considered commercial amenity and permitted uh, under this use of zone three in the redevelopment plan. Fourth floor again, um, we have created a commercial fitness center with a gym. Um, and also a rock climbing area. As you can see, there's a void in the space. But again, uh, at eight thousand square feet, the fourth floor, uh, lends itself to the office and/or commercial, uh, amenity, which is permitted by use. Floors five through thirteen remain exactly the same as residential with the same program. And at the fourteenth floor, uh, we have created, uh, a complete owner amenity suite. Um, this is for, uh, the residents of the building, um, non-residential area. And what you will have is different lounge areas and potentially, uh, uh, theater and in, in game rooms and such. But again, uh, no expanding, uh, of the lock courage, no expanding of the setbacks. Uh, one additional floor of ten feet, uh, and, and this triggered the two eighty-five to two hundred and ninety-five, uh, height increase. The roof configuration is slightly changed. Um, as you can see now, the, uh, in the below graphic, the proposed amenity space slightly decreased from one thousand six hundred and forty-four square feet to one thousand four hundred and forty-nine square feet. The upper roof deck area, uh, has since expanded and the green belt around the perimeter now follows the balcony line as it walks up the building. So originally, the, uh, the roof was in the configuration of the tower. However, did not follow the, uh, the climbing, uh, balconies. So now you actually have now a viewing point, uh, on the roof from this upper roof deck now. We changed the, uh, freestanding trellis to an attached trellis, um, for exterior protection here. Um, basically coming out of the elevator lobby and you're facing east. There's no change to the proposed green roof area from the original application uh, to the new application. As you can see here, this is what the new trellis configuration is. Uh, it wraps the, the, the bulkhead. And, and again, we have some upper, uh, roof, uh, green roof area with mechanically screened, uh, equipment. Taking you to the building exterior, the increase in ten feet changes the horizontal proportion of the building slightly. Um, as you can see here, previously approved the Summit Avenue elevation. Uh, the building signage was at six twenty-two Summit, which was vertical here between the two podium piers. The original podium piers, we had a grouping of five windows to the left and four windows to the right. As part of this new application, since we did add an additional story, we have a four-story bay, uh, in the center here where my cursor is located. And again, we have a five-window grouping here and we added a fifth window grouping right here for symmetry of the podium. So now what you have is a, a grouping of five windows to the left, five windows to the right. The one-story increase changed the horizontal proportions of the screen system. Um, again, as part of the original application, we had shown P TAC units, uh, just kind of sporadically located uh, in the facade. So what we did, uh, the podium now is, uh, perfectly balanced. Instead of having, uh, a, a singular P TAC unit, what we created was a horizontal band out of the louver system now. So you don't exactly know where the P TAC is. We have a nice, simple horizontal band now right above the floor level and that goes throughout the building. So instead of having a, a, a simple P TAC louver, now you have a, an additional design element that becomes part of the facade. The original application at six twenty-two, uh, Summit Avenue, which is the building address, uh, to the right here. We have since moved, uh, the building name, the Sing Tower, uh, to the left, to the left of the main entry and the drop-off. Again, this is a simple, uh, aluminum, uh, uh, raised, um, signage. Um, non-lit, uh, again, building mounted, um, very low impact. Again, um, ownership, uh, has given us uh, so much support, uh, as part of this project and we are, we are proud to have his name on the building. Again, as you can see, from graphic to the left, graphic to the right. Um, the building base again is predominantly done out of brick masonry um, with some, uh, cement board panel to the back right-hand side, which is located here. The proportions of the screen system remain exactly the same. There's some slight, uh, vertical spoke movement, uh, and some changes, uh, as part of the application that just because of some of the interior layouts and the partitions moved the vertical change with it. The cladding system and all the building materials as originally proposed are exactly the same. Uh, we have an off-white or a grayish-white A C M panel as the principal field. With an aluminum clad, uh, window system and again, a powder-coated aluminum horizontal louver system. Uh, the tiered balconies or step balconies again are frameless glass. Um, and the building design itself, uh, other than some small changes, uh, in the vertical and the one horizontal at the base, uh, kind of remains exactly the same in design intent. Again, uh, uh, very simple changes. Uh, the original application had masonry to the back facing east. Uh, we had changed a small portion to the base of the building to A C M, uh, composite panel to make it seem like the tower was coming down and spilling to the rear yard. Uh, so we, we thought it was more continuity, uh, of the tower itself to continue to the left to the east. Uh, again, we feel it's a small change. Just look at the building from, uh, Summit Avenue, uh, looking south. Uh, again, uh, very similar in design, just some, some slight vertical changes and the horizontal, uh, louver change. This concludes, uh, my amendments, my presentation this evening, and I'm here if the board should have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vande Mark. Uh, believe it or not, I actually do have a question.
Sure.
For the detailed presentation. Uh, I'd like to talk stormwater detention.
Sure.
You said that's going to be moved up to the roof. Uh, I'm fascinated. This is the first time we've heard this. Um, if you could just walk us through it, is it, you know, how is it detained? Is it in a tank? Is it, you know, just pipe work like an underground storage?
What, what, what happens is, is, uh, is actually, let's, let's consider below the actual deck area here. It becomes a actua- a, a deeper pocket, uh, so to speak. So below the, uh, uh, standard pedestal system, you know, you'd have tapered insulation, you'd have approximately two to three inches. You have eight to twelve inches now of, of, of void, uh, underneath this, uh, roof deck system now that, that retains water. Um, and then slowly releases it back into the leader pipe and then takes it down the building and into the municipal system. So in, instead of this stormwater detention system occurring, uh, below grade, which takes the roof leaders down and then slowly releases it, the water is slowly released at the roof level. Um, uh, so it's just almost like, uh, it's attacking it from a higher point as opposed to living in the ground.
Sure. Um, is, so that, that sits in between your, you know, your decking material and the concrete slab, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is that going to be heat traced? How, how do we prevent freezing on that?
Um, it, well, it, it is, it is sitting on insulation. I have the civil engineer, uh, here. If, if he can answer some questions about it, um. That is a good question about heat tracing. However, there, there is no plans for, uh, any sort of heat tracing, uh, uh, you know, as part of the system right now.
Okay, is, um, i- is it PVC pipe? Is it?
No, it's, it's, you're almost creating, uh, uh, a hypothetical big bathtub up there. So you have a complete waterproof membrane system.
Understood.
That the water is just sitting in.
Yeah, I, I thought it was, you know, similar to, to the underground system where it's a series of.
Series of pipes, yeah.
Interesting, very interesting. Um, yeah, no, obviously wouldn't heat trace that. Thank you for not calling me stupid.
No. First time you, first time me, Chair.
Yeah, no, that's, it's fascinating. It's a great idea. Um.
I mean, we, we have, we have, do have our civil engineer in, in the event that you, you have further questions or want, want further detail on it.
No, I, I think that makes perfect sense to me. I, I thought it was something else, but, um, no, it's incredibly simple and I, I think it's a, it's actually a smarter design than having it underground. Anyway, that, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
So, this is Commissioner Torres. Uh, piggybacking off of Chairman Lasting, so. Um, I was wondering the same thing, how would that, uh, how are you controlling the water? So when you do have a bathtub situation, um, as it doesn't hit the height of the bathtub, it freezes. Is there some type of overflow on it just in case things freeze and it didn't melt right away? And we had another potential rain? Is it, or just going to be a sub, you know, like a it's just going to be still retaining water to a higher level at, at certain point, but it a certain height would have started draining down anyway?
Well, the, the system will have, you know, what is considered a, a lower drain system that are choked for the water detention. But there is elevated, uh, roof drains in the event that, you know, this thing does fill up to a certain level. It's called an overflow drain and, and then.
Overflow drain, yeah.
Those drains would take over.
Very good. All right. That's, that's good. That's a good mechanism. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Eddie, I can't wait to see who fights to get that work now.
Oh, no, we got it. We, we, well, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. We'll see.
Yeah, it's drainage.
All right, we'll see what happens. Uh, all right, anybody else? Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Vande Mark. We appreciate it.
Same here. Thank you.
Okay, great. Then I'm going to turn over to Mr. Height so he can, uh, address the requested deviations.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening again.
And, uh, Mr. Height, you've already been sworn in. You're already qualified tonight. If you could just, uh, for the record, uh, let us know that you understand that you're, uh, still under oath?
Yes, understood, still under oath.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, board members. Um, if you do remember back in twenty twenty, for those who were, of you were on the board, um, this project was transformational and, and, and still is. Um, the level of detail in the, in the design, uh, both along the frontage on, um, Summit Avenue as well as the rear of the building with the articulating balconies, uh, is, is a work of art, um, in its truest form. So um, we were very excited and as Mr. Vande Mark and Mr. Harrington, uh, alluded to earlier, we are still very excited for this project. Um, we are here to present a few, uh, changes as Mr. Vande Mark covered. Uh, we did have a set of deviations requested, uh, for the board. Um, all of the justifications that were presented are still in full effect, um, in my opinion, uh, to warrant the, the grant of the deviations. So i- in summary fashion, I'm going to just walk through what's changed in terms of the deviations and remind the board the, the summary justifications that, that, uh, we referenced in the twenty twenty application. Um, so I'll start at the base just so the board can, can track in terms of, of the grade level. Um, we are, uh, because of the changes with P and C and G, we are locating, uh, switchgear equipment at grade level exterior of the building. Uh, we did coordinate with both P S E N G and city planning as to the most appropriate location. Uh, all utility equipment in Journal Square is to be interior of the building. We do provide the main transfer room interior of the building. We relocated it to access from Summit Avenue. Uh, there is a small mounted pad, um, which we've located to the north extent along Summit Avenue. And it really will be, uh, tucked away just as the overpass occurs, um, as pedestrians walk by. So we, we figured that would be the most appropriate location, uh, to locate that, uh, equipment that's exterior of the building. Uh, it's not within any sidewalk access areas. It is tucked away, um, in, in an open area on the site. So that's the first, uh, new deviation that's being requested. Um, with respect to the base, uh, and, and at the ground floor, we did request a loading, uh, deviation for back-end loading movements where only front-in, front-out are permitted. Um, that was previously granted. That does not change. We are still providing off-street loading with this facility that we thought was a benefit. Um, given its location on Summit Avenue. Uh, with respect to the base of the building, uh, we are adjacent to lower and lower intensity zone, the zone four. Um, so this property is in zone three. Uh, the Hudson County, uh, garage facility as well as the, uh, Saint Paul's Church are, are adjacent properties in zone four. It's essentially, uh, a full building for the Hudson County Garage, a full building coverage on that property as well as a parking area in the rear on the, on the church's property. So, uh, to remind the board, the justification for, uh, the setback is really in, in response to the existing uses on the adjacent lots. Um, not having real residential uses, which is the intent of that requirement, but more of institutional and governmental uses. Uh, as we move up the stories, we just wanted to call out that we are not simply adding on two floors of residential. Uh, as Mr. Vande Mark alluded to, um, the additions really is a mezzanine level to more efficiently use the uh, space on the ground floor commercial. So that does technically count as a story. Uh, but it's obviously integrated to the commercial uses, um, as well as the, the conference room. The fourteenth floor was something that, um, we were always, uh, looking to try and, uh, increase amenities for future residents. This, there will be two hundred and nine units. That has not changed, by the way. Um, but, uh, a building of that size does want to account for a certain, uh, amount of amenities. Um, so again, that fourteen-four is being introduced to provide for, uh, amenities for future tenants of the building. Permitted, you're allowed twenty-seven, uh, stories. We are utilizing twenty-five residential floors with two floors of office space bonus. We are proposing twenty-nine, adding those two floors in. Uh, and the justification for that, that the board has heard on previous applications is based on the floor-to-ceiling elevations, which are comfortable. We're not squeezing or reducing the residential floors in any way, just more efficiently using the floor-to-ceiling heights. Um, we're permitted a total building height of two hundred and ninety-three feet. What's being proposed is two hundred and ninety-five feet. So for all intensive purposes, uh, we are two feet greater than what would be permitted. Uh, we don't have the full extent of the office floors, which would be fourteen feet. We have a more, uh, reasonable office floor-to-ceiling height that's less than that. And that's where we're able to make up the difference in the overall height of the building. That is a new variance, but again, it's not simply adding on two stories to the top. It's integrating those floors at the second and the fourteenth story. The other, uh, deviations with respect to, uh, setbacks and, uh, a rear yard requirement for the depth of a building where eighty-five feet is permitted and we are proposing ninety-three feet for, um, for the overall building. Uh, those, uh, do not change in terms of the justification. We're just requesting relief for the additional stories of which now are becoming, instead of the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh floor, it's the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth floor. Um, so again, in terms of the positive criteria, uh, we've established that this tower on a base does conform to the bulk of the requirements of tower on a base permitted in zone three. Uh, we are in a, a unique lot in terms of, uh, a, a suitable lot size, but an irregular lot shape. We are also just south of, of the path cut, which, uh, allows us, um, the, uh,
Bergen Arches.
Ber- Bergen Arches Cut, thank you, um, which was formerly. Bergen Arches Cut, thank you, um, which was formerly an NJ Transit um line. But uh that allows us to uh basically cast shadows um north of us onto the Bergen Arches uh cut. Um, and and not have any impacts to our adjacent properties to the south of us. So to really. Uh, an appropriate location to uh advocate for a a tower on a base structure uh with added height um on this on Summit Avenue. Um. With respect to balconies, uh, we do need relief for the balconies dimension being greater than what's permitted. Um, there are balconies proposed for the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth stories, so they're new, um, that weren't previously appro- proposed. But those balconies are integrated into the overall design. Um, and as Mr. Van de Mark had shown on the last slide, uh, they're really the art of the architecture um with this application because the balconies. Are uh are strategically, um, and Anthony probably has better words than this. But uh they're strategically placed to create a very variable but balanced and cohesive uh architecture of the building. So the balconies are in essence, part of the architecture. Um, and we need relief at the twenty-eighth and twenty-nine stories uh for for the location of those balconies, the size and dimensions. Uh, I believe. That's all of the changes as it relates to the deviations. Um, again, we have an uh an appropriate lot location, an irregular rear yard area, but. The impacts in terms of the negative impacts are really uh minimal because we're adjacent to. A uh Hudson County Garage, that's our most immediate neighbor. Um, that's in the lower intensity zone. There also is a a mixed use building and a bank at the corner of Hoboken Summit. Um, and then also an adjacent uh rear yard neighbor is is the church. But in this rear portion of the church, it's just a surface parking lot. But there's no home, there's no habitable windows within proximity of where we're proposing the building base and tower. Um, and lastly, just as you remember, we've shifted this tower um north on the property. So we provided the fifteen feet of of setback. Twenty feet required, but again, fifteen feet is what's being proposed or what was proposed. Um, and three feet on the north side is what's proposed. So again, twenty feet's required on the s- side yard, but. Um, we're proposing three feet because we've shifted the tower north to be just adjacent to the Bergen Arches Cut. And and there's that that's hopefully will be a future um linear park and and access to that uh amenity uh right at our footstep. So. I don't want to get into all of the um planning purposes that we're furthering um with the redevelopment plan, but this is truly redevelopment of the site. And um we view it as a positive uh positive change with this application.
Thank you, Mr. Height.
All right, thanks, Mr. Height. I have no questions. Uh, anybody else for Mr. Height? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that that completes our uh presentation. I just know for the record, we did receive Mr. Creel's report. And uh we would um agree to the conditions proposed within his report.
Great, appreciate it. Uh, all right, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
No one from the public wishing to speak? I move to close the public session.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to wrap up with?
Uh, just that the uh. Uh, the changes being proposed and the uh additional variances do not impact the uh zone uh district of the Journal Square twenty-sixth redevelopment plan and planning is in agreement. Um, with the testimony of Mr. Height and uh. Approves the application, approves of the application as proposed tonight.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash one four eight that's presented to the board this evening for approval.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Gangen.
I just want to say thank you so much for that detailed presentation. Um, my vote is aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Just like the last time, uh, this great building, great look, first look at it. Like they said, it is a piece. And um. Then I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Sali.
Yeah, it's such a nice project in our area and Journal Square area, such a nice project. It's so much detailed presentation. I I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Welcome to the neighborhood. I vote aye.
Chairman Lyston?
Um, yeah, I don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan with the changes. Um. Mr. Van de Mark, thi- this was one of my favorite buildings uh that I've seen from you and uh. I think this is actually a better use of space. Um. I I. Like that we're changing with the times on the the commercial amenity rather than uh, you know, office space not being in demand anymore. Um, I think the design element on the PTAC units is interesting. Um. So like I said, I don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan. And uh I'm gonna vote aye. Good luck. And I I think I just saw a site work happening on there today. Um. So a- and I appreciate the fact, I think there's labor harmony here. So uh, yeah, it's an easy aye for me.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Uh, Mike, do you want to get five in now or do you want to uh? I think the next one might be quick.
I would, I would hope so.
If you think so, then I think so too. I trust you. Hmm. Okay, uh, let's move on to item twenty. It's case.
I don't know about that, Mike.
I don't know. Uh, case P two-three dash zero zero seven is an administrative amendment. For four oh one to four oh five, Whiten Street.
White and St.
Whiten Street.
Right.
Got it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I have this one as well. I know Mr. Gluck is listed as the attorney. Uh, so for the record, Charles Harrington of Colafoli, on behalf of the applicant. Of my architect for this uh administrative amendment is Dennis DeVino. I don't know if he's been um. Promoted as a panelist yet. Um, but uh, if uh I'll just um go through this, this this. Uh, application was approved a little over two years ago. Um, it is a project within the Lafayette Park redevelopment plan area. I believe this is probably gonna be the first project to get out of the ground under the most recent amendments to the uh redevelopment plan back in twenty sixteen. And what those amendments did is they provided for bonus provisions uh that would result in. Portable units as well as resilient resiliency space uh within a building, both of which this this building has. Um, my client is designated, they own the property and they are the designated redeveloper by the JCRA. Uh, in the last two years, they have uh demolished the property. Uh, they have. Uh, done all all kinds of site work, uh, removed oil tanks uh to get to get to the point where it is now cleared. And they are um hoping to start construction within the next few months. Um, with that said, we have uh some administrative amendments or or changes. Uh, to the project that we're presenting tonight, uh, before we, you know, get into the ground and and start the construction. Um, so Dennis uh DeVino, um, he's going to present those to you. I I know we're gonna. Forget Mark, I think Dennis needs to mark uh the exit uh his plans tonight. There there is one tweak he made to. He made to the plan to the rear of the property, which he'll uh explain with regard to the resiliency space. So. If um we could mark those as A two and also let me back up. I I believe I noticed for this. So. If uh if I could have those marked, although it's probably not required, I think I I believe we did. And if they were um could be marked into evidence.
Thank you, Council. You did notice for this matter, uh. Ironically, this one's not as old. It's originally scheduled for the March seventh hearing. And was carried through to this evening. So we can mark the notice and affidavit of publication proof of mailing. As A one for purposes of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Harrington, please don't. Let me be a liar here. I think we can get this done in ten minutes.
A lot of pressure and that's all.
Wow. All right, Dennis, I'll swear in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state, spell your name, please?
Uh, Dennis Michael DeVino, D E V I S N Victor I N O.
Thank you. Mr. DeVino, good evening. We've qualified you numerous times as well. Uh, your license is current tonight, sir?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay, I'm done.
And Dennis, we're we're gonna mark you.
All the pressures on me here.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, so uh, yeah, we have a total of sixteen slides and I. Probably didn't have to be that many, but those are the number of the number of drawings that were submitted initially. For this application and then where if there were some modifications to any one of those drawings. We we included it in the package. Um. The um exhibits really fall under um. Changes that we kind of came up with after this package was submitted. The drawings themselves have not, or they're the same drawings that are in the package, but they're minor tweaks to minor uh design tweaks. To various different parts of those particular drawings. So just so we can get all these amendments in place. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to look at all of them. So there's a si- there's a series of six. Um, again, same drawings that were submitted, but there are six uh exhibits. Um, so. I don't know if the board wants me to just hit those exhibits when I get to that or uh submit them all right now.
Well, Dennis, what can't can we just mark your all your all your sheets as A two?
Sure. Yeah.
And then you can, then you can just walk right through the project.
Okay.
Yeah, that works for us. That's perfect.
All right, um, all the sheets is A two. All right, okay. Uh, do we have that?
Yep. Yeah, just have any. Are there?
Shared squeaks. So we don't got it.
There are sixteen sheets, right, Dennis?
There's sixteen sheets and six, well, six exhibit exhibits.
Okay, so a total of twenty-two, then we'll we'll mark those twenty-two sheets as A two.
Okay, do we have those? Are we up?
You.
All right. So uh just to try to be brief and try to put some clarity to what we're presenting today, there are essentially.
DeVino, I'm not seeing.
Oh, you don't see it?
No.
How about now?
No, not yet.
Here it goes.
Now we.
Got it.
You got it now?
Yeah.
All right, so again.
We just lost it, Mr. DeVino. We uh we see your. There we go. Okay, there it is.
All right, so a- again, to add some clarity to these changes or the amendments, there were four major, four. Categories, if you will, of of changes. Um. And it was all part of this whole design development concept, uh, design development phase that we all go through between the design phase and the construction document phase. Where we find that we have to make some minor alterations in order to make, get the building to work properly. Uh, so there was a relocation of area ways. We had two area ways in the original design. They were internal. Uh, kind of in the middle of both north and south. Size of the buildings. We pushed those to the rear. By doing that, that made uh some minor layout changes. Uh, we had intended on using an all gas building uh to heat and uh and and to cook. Uh, that was changed by the by the client to a more of all electric building. Therefore, we needed to incorporate a transformer room. So that took up quite a bit of the first floor space. And that also made um some um adjustments to the layouts. Uh, the, as Mr. Harrington uh indicated, that this particular project, in order for us to go to an eight story, we um were able to. Take advantage of the resiliency bonus, which allowed what we, four hundred square feet. For the Office of uh Emergency Management for their storage. Realized that, well, we can't have them in the floodplain, so we had to lift up the floor. To uh another three feet in their unit, in their space that therefore it kind of prevented us. From doing this ten-foot rear wall, which we testified uh that back in two thousand nineteen. So we wanted to be clear on what kind of design. Um, um, revision was made in order to satisfy that. And then the last item was really design, uh, completely design. Um, decisions to the front facade and some material changes. So with that said, uh, you could see that the 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 layouts, I mean, the floor plans or the floor areas didn't change at all. Well.
We're still seeing the first page.
Well, the first page, I just want to point out very quickly that the gross area, um. I don't know if people can see, but the gross area actually got slightly increased. From a rentable area by uh two hundred and twenty-eight square feet from the total building, and that is. Because of the movement of some of these uh area ways. And um since we didn't have any really room for a trash uh room or a um. Uh, a chute, a trash chute, uh, some of the units gained a little bit of square footage. And that really is. The the reason why uh this area, the square footage changed. Uh, I'm gonna, okay, so, um. The second sheet, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to bring in, um. This one. Uh, so as you can see, these area ways, uh. Here and here were internal. They're now pushed to the rear of the building. And therefore, the st- the stair shaft that was here was able to be pushed to the north side. And this is the area that I was referring to for the OEM room and how that impeded or impacted that rear wall. And I'll get to that a little bit earl- a little bit later in the presentation. Okay, this floor, the the first floor, you could see the adjustments that had to be made with the large transformer room in this location. Um, we had to kind of reduce the size of the drive aisle. We moved the, brought it, brought the refuge room on the first floor.
Could you just refer to the sheet that that you're, we we can't see the sheet on the screen. So if you.
Okay, sorry, the sheet is Z four A.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, um, we brought the refuge room to the first floor. We still have the same amount of bikes, uh, bike storage. And here is the area where I refer to as the um resiliency room. Um, still have the lobby. As you know, we need a fire command center. So that's basically the adjustments to that. Um, to that first floor, uh, four B. Again, you could see the adjustments here where there used to be a a trash room here. We now removed that and brought that unit uh. Uh, up against that stairwell. We had to create a elevator lobby. Once again, you could see that these area ways got pushed to the rear. And then you could see that uh uh. The um that resiliency room and why we needed that upper, that higher ceiling in that area. All right, well, four B, we should go to the four B. Same, I don't think it's necessary to to go through each floor because each floor in this O four line has changed identically. And in in every floor from two on up to eight. So there's really no reason to go through every floor here. This is the change from every floor. And and so is the area ways pushed to the back. Again, because of this drawing showed the rear um green roof this way. It really is gonna look more like that, excuse me, where the green roof is gonna go butt right up against. The back wall and then we got the planter, which takes up about eighty percent of that back wall now.
Yeah, maybe, Mr. DeVino, if we could jump to the material uh. Changes or changes and and in the back wall.
Yep. Okay, so I think the uh, if you look at the elevations very quickly, the changes, there were four. Uh, changes in the in the in the design of the front elevation. We um. Increased the uh the details of the of top uh cornice. We created a reveal around every single window, a brick. Which gives the um the appearance of a of more of a recessed window and allow the windows to be uh more identifiable. And we removed this stone. We have had two stories of a a cast stone and we brought it down to one story. The windows and doors adjusted according to the rec- the need for the uh for the interior layout. And. And I think it's the material changes. We had, this is again where the uh, area where it used to be, it's now towards the back. This was all stucco. We've continued to keep the stucco there. We moved, we replaced the hardy board or hardy plank siding with stucco. And that is consistent throughout the back as well. What was, what used to be the hardy plank is now stucco. We maintain the brick facade at the rear. And, um, I just want to bring in, this is mine. I think it's just the important part. I want to make sure we, how am I doing on it? Anybody keeping time?
You got three minutes.
All right, I got three. I'll, I'll be done in two and a half. So initial, the initial design had this wall at ten feet. We had to bring it up to, believe it or not, ten foot eleven and a half. And we created this planter in the back where we can put a more dense uh, vegetation to soften that edge of the back wall. As you can see, right here is where the wall had to pop, break, brought back up to the elevation, uh, twelve, where, uh, we can get a eight foot ceiling inside the OEM room. So I think that is, and then we could probably, the best thing to do is probably go right over to the rendering where you can actually see what the design changes were in the front facade. You could see the reveal around the windows, the more, um, detailed cornice and the reduction of the stone from two stories to uh, one story. And of course, the change from a, a gray random brick to a more of a terracotta, more, um, traditional brick design. Hmm, that's basically it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeVino. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Yep.
That completes our presentation.
All right. Thank you, Council. Mr. DeVino, if you could just stop your, uh, screen share there. Okay, thank you, sir. And, uh, Council said that was his presentation. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, I don't see any call-ins, but, uh, you could press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm only going to just state the obvious here that, um, this is still meeting the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan. Um, none of these changes would, uh, have any type of negative impact on the, uh, neighboring properties or, um, any of the general public's welfare and wellbeing. Um, planning staff would only ask that the applicant and, uh, their attorney agree to the conditions in the planning staff report.
Yes, we do.
Okay, um, planning staff recommends approval.
All right. Thanks, Cam.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, three dash zero, zero, seven as presented to the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Well done. I wish you all the best and good timing. Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Leiston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Um, all right, Mike, let's get you a break. It's, uh, nine oh, six. We'll be back at nine eleven. Say nine eleven.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, but I think some of these folks are just on, maybe because they've left their computer on. I do not know.
We're going to have to punish them next time.
I'm planning on, um, calling the attorney that we were going to just call, um, and, uh, talking to them.
Okay.
Yes, I agree.
All right. Let's memorialize resolutions, Chairman.
Well, let's, uh, let's carry this to a date, sir. And Matt, do we want to do the twenty-fifth?
Yes, please.
Okay, so let's carry this to a date, sir, and, uh, April twenty-fifth, the preservation of notice. Yeah. And, uh, all right, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions.
Sure, there's five resolution. Um, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolution. Resolution of the Planning Board for the City of Jersey City Preliminary Final Major Site Plan Review Submitted by One Twenty Monticello LLC, one eighteen dash one twenty-four Monticello Avenue, also known as one twenty Monticello Avenue, block one six nine zero two lots five, six and seven. That case number is P two, two dash zero, five, nine. Second resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City. Approving an amendment to the preliminary and final major site plan with deviations and conditions applicants is warned at Bay LLC for amendment to the preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviation. Property address is one thirty Bay Street, block number one three five zero four lot two. That case number is P two, two dash zero, nine, nine. Third resolution is the resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City. Preliminary and final majors, major subdivision submitted by four one, seven Community Park LLC, four seventeen Community Park Avenue and one thirty-nine Woodward Street, block one eight nine oh, one lots twenty-three and twenty-nine. That case number is P two, two, one, P two, two, one, four, five. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan Submitted by four seventeen Community Park Community Park Avenue and one thirty-nine Woodward Street, block number one eight nine zero, one lots twenty-three and twenty-nine. That case number is P two, two dash one, four, six. Resolution of City of, of the Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of M C R Route four forty Jersey City LLC Route four forty and the corn rail track south of Interstate seventy-eight, which is the New Jersey turnpike extension, block three, zero, three, zero, five lots two, three and four and five point zero, one. Case number is P two, two dash two, two, three. Decided on March fourteen, twenty twenty-three, memorialize on April fourth. Industrial District applicant for amendment preliminary and major site plan approval with deviation.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Leiston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
All right. Thank you. Uh, do we need an executive session? Anybody?
No.
Is this happening? I can't believe this is happening.
I can't believe it too.
Oof, this feels like the old days, right? Let's go out.
Was that special meeting?
Right, killing it. Um, all right, guys, uh, listen, before we adjourn, thank you. I appreciate everybody. I, I know this is, uh, you know, a heavy lift being here all these nights and I really appreciate you guys. So, uh, you know, it's in a motion for adjournment then.
Motion.
Cam, stay well.
I am taking a lot of the calcium and vitamin D supplements and, you know, resting.
Best on that, pal. We're off to the next couple of weeks, right? We're not back till the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, three weeks. So, uh, excellent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Be
Enjoy your Easter.
Just tell
Happy Easter.
Over and it al fita.